Welcome, everyone, to the Hudson School District work session. If we'd stand and say the pledge of flag, please.
Pledge of flag or pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Okay, and I don't have my agenda sheet. Here it is. Okay, first topic for discussion will be Market and Johnson Possible Action Item. Bonnie?
Yep, attached in your packet are copies of the Market and Johnson bills through August. They had made a request to do a second payment this month because they were a month behind previously, so this would be outstanding bills through the end of August of 2025.
Any questions?
Mr. President.
Maria?
Quick question on this. Nick, could you share a little bit about the total value of this contract and how much, how we are in relation to their original bid and payouts? Are we over or are we under?
Yeah, I was, oops, sorry, I was a little loud. So with Market and Johnson, it kind of combines, I guess, with a little bit of the construction update. So the total, total work being done is $44 million, of which 29 is paid for with bonds, 15 million is paid for designated fund balance. Currently, you know, we were carrying about 1.2 million in contingency to start the projects. We're sitting right around 300,000 in contingency right now with some of our allowances also. We have a couple hundred thousand in allowances as well. So we're anticipating if we can bring it on home with everything that's finishing up, that we should be able to hopefully bring the project in, you know, close to half a million dollars under budget when it's all said and done.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? So do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
I'll take a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $3,732,768.27.
Thank you, Megan. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Molly. All those in favor?
Oh, gosh.
Except Brian. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none. That passes. Moving on to Shannon with the high school course proposals.
Yeah, so if my folks want to come up, just while they're coming up, I'll just give a little background with the approval process for courses. As you can see on the next slide, teachers have the opportunity to submit these proposals during Phase Two of the, you see that? Phase Two of the curriculum improvement process. And then you can kind of see the steps that we go through. The teachers create the proposal, they submit that in May, then the school reviews it, teaching and learning department reviews it. Now it's your turn to review it as the board. And then if it is, if the courses are approved, then teachers will start learning or start writing that curriculum and students will actually be able to register for those come November. So here to talk about our proposals, we have Tom Johnston and Leslie Blaskowicz.
All right. I think mine's first. My name is Tom Johnston. I'm an instructional coach and curriculum specialist here at the high school. And one of the departments that I work with is the Health and Fayed. So Carly Langer is the building's adapted Fayed teacher, and she had the idea to bring this forward as a proposal this last school year. We did a little research on it. We went and actually toured another school that is currently implementing this in the area. And so you see that proposal before you. One of the things that really struck me as Carly was writing this was how much overlap there was between the course proposal and everything that the district believes in, from the district's values, the Fayed department's beliefs, the strategic plan, the new current strategic plan, the words collaborative and inclusive, community, leadership, those words kept coming to the top. And so Carly put this wonderful proposal together, and we're really excited about the possibility of moving forward with it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Kate.
I am just wondering if for people maybe who are watching that don't have this input here that we're reading, maybe you could just give a brief overview of what it is?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So it's called Unified Fayed, and so the idea is to actually have kind of a combined Fayed class where you have about half the students in the class are students with individualized education plans that have adapted Fayed minutes. And then you have about half, about 15 more, students that do not have individualized education plans, and you bring them all together in one setting. So traditionally or typically, students with IEPs that have adapted Fayed minutes kind of have that separately. And so now we're kind of bringing that together in a more inclusive model to bring all the students into one setting because we know there's so much learning that can happen from all students when we bring everybody together.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
I love it. I think this sounds awesome, and I think, you know, we all live together out in, in the world, so this more inclusive and collaborative course sounds really exciting.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have one more thing to say.
Yes, Kate.
Sorry. I just think it's really a neat program, and I think, just like you said, everybody gets something out of it. And I also think it's really fun that you're kind of in the thick of it and you can see what our students might need or what would be beneficial for them and put something like this together. And I love to see that, so thank you.
Thank you. No other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
And I'm Leslie Blaskowicz. I'm the school to career coordinator, and I work with a career and technical education faculty when they're creating their course proposals. This came as a result of student request to increase their skill set, and it was also proposed by the instructor, Dan Wyland, who now teaches Level One of this course. He also recently received a STAR grant for some advanced editing software, so this will be used in this new course proposal. So this is pretty straightforward. It's an HRPN News 2, so it's a more advanced version where students will build on the skill sets that they learned in Level One and increase their technical expertise and their leadership ability in this area. So what Dan has proposed is there's four main areas. One's an advanced production technique section where students will learn more advanced techniques with audio editing, with microphones. When do I use a directional microphone, a parabolic microphone, a lavalier, those types of things? They also have another area that has to do with gaffing, which is lighting, three-point lighting, remote lighting, those types of scenarios. In addition, we're going to be using that advanced video editing software, and they're going to be learning about more compositing and doing more packages. So if you see, for example, on the news, something that Boyd Hooper put together, that's the kind of things that students will work on, an absolute package that has A and B role video, it has graphics, it has music and sound all incorporated together. Finally, I think the most exciting thing is the leadership aspect. So instead of our instructor doing most of the leadership, which is a little bit of what happens in, at the beginning of one, not as much at the end, we're going to have students be the director, the technical director, the audio director, the chief editor. And so we're going to move up that skill set of students to lead and direct their fellow students during the actual production time. So this class could stand alone, or it could be stacked together, so you could run one and two together at the same time. So we're excited to offer this and see what creative things the kids come up with.
Molly?
Thanks, Bob. I mean, gosh, I'm so sorry. I have the defective microphone tonight. Thank you. I'm sorry to ask this question. I should know this, but I know that they have the news program at the high school and like they have at the elementary schools and et cetera. So they, are they actually doing the news program, or is it kind of additional to that? Or can you?
They're doing the news program with this new course. They may have more high-level packages that would be graded more on technical expertise, like rule of thirds, headspace, lead space, white balance, those types of things. So these students would still be producing it, but at a higher level. They may also produce additional content, like short videos as well. So it will be what they're doing now, but at a higher technical level and perhaps some additional video production that we haven't had an opportunity to do outside of the newscast itself.
Yeah. That sounds like it really fits in with learning and taking those skills into work, into an actual work situation. So that's super cool. Thank you.
Mr. President? Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this proposal. I noticed you said that the teacher got a STAR grant from the educational foundation here at Hudson, and I just wanted to applaud him for applying it and kind of highlight that's one way that a foundation is currently supporting our school district in allowing teachers to get additional training or through their course curriculum development process and giving them those extra stipends. So I think that's great. Thank you.
So my question would be, as far as the equipment needed for this, part of the grant is for that, or do we have enough?
We have, we have enough. The STAR grant gave us that additional video editing software. We've also been supporting the studio with some Perkins funding and also some other CTE funds that we have through Act 59. So we're all set to go. The kids are raring to go.
Excellent. Sounds great. Anyone? Okay. Is that Shannon? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Next up is the State Superintendent Meetings Report.
Yes, so one of the things you guys asked me to do is want to get back from the statewide meetings in Madison to give kind of a little bit of an update of what's going on and what we're hearing around the state. A couple of initiatives, and this is something that we're kind of in the process of doing, you know, there was a lot of conversation, a lot of meetings related to AI on multiple levels, you know, how are we going to handle artificial intelligence and how can that look in our schools? Both how can we have our, get our kids to be more prolific users of it and balance that with privacy issues and all kinds of different, different components, but also how can we use it to become more efficient in our jobs, in our, in our day-to-day life? In talking with some of the different folks down there, they see, you know, AI and the benefits that are coming with it, but also the challenges as being as big of a disruptor as when the internet came was, was kind of brought to us. And when I say disruptor, I don't mean disruptor in a bad sense, like all negative, it just changed how we do things. And so there was a lot of conversation about artificial intelligence and how we were going to utilize it. We also have what's called the Large District Caucus down there, which is about the biggest 30, 35 school districts in the state out of 421. We need to kind of go through a couple of different, just agenda items and topics and things like that. One of the things that, that came up in the Large District Caucus was related to school closures. It was kind of quite, quite timely as we've talked about different things. And at the time, 18 of the, of the 30 or so districts were present at the meeting. And of the 18 school districts there, nine are currently in the process of having to look at it just because of enrollment situations. And so we're not alone in having some of these challenges and having declining enrollment. It's definitely something that's, that's hitting a lot of districts across the state. We also got additional legislative updates on multiple levels. There is a fairly large legislative package of bills that are going to be coming through talking about consolidation. It's not necessarily direct impact to the Hudson School District because we're kind of in a, we're a little bit larger district, but there's a group of bills that are coming through to try to encourage or incentivize smaller districts to consolidate and, and close buildings and things along those lines. I don't know if they've all been introduced as of yet, but I think it's coming down the pipe. However, they did say that because we're sitting in a situation where we have, for the first time in a long time, a non-incumbent running for governor, so you have both the Democrats and the Republicans are, are going to end up with primaries, that the legislature is probably not going to do a whole lot. It's going to, it's, there's going to be bills that are going to go out there, and a lot of them are going to be kind of forced votes from a standpoint of to try to get folks on record, one way or another, on how they vote on different issues. But overall, even though there will be some of those forced votes and things like that, they don't anticipate a lot of actual bills making it all the way through the legislature and being signed by the governor's office. And so it'll be kind of interesting as everybody is kind of jockeying for position with the gubernatorial race coming up next fall and what that looks like. They also talked about the upcoming Supreme Court race as well. Supreme Court justices are elected on a 10-year site, a 10-year term, and since I believe there is six Supreme Court justices, seven Supreme Court justices, most years there's a Supreme Court race is the way it works. There's only a few years that there aren't in a 10-year cycle, so that's, that's coming up as well. The last thing that was a big conversation down there was the changes to DPI, which is the Department of Public Instruction, in how they're doing business and how they're, they're overseeing school districts and what we do. They are revamping their entire structure and setup, which is not the end of the world because there's some dysfunction down there, so that, that is good. However, anytime you take an entity that has a tremendous amount of oversight and regulatory authority over school districts and you start moving all the pieces around at once, it can create for some challenging situations as far as trying to get information and getting answers and things like that. And so a lot of conversation about that as we went through that. So just wanted to give that update of some of the things, you know, that we're, we're going through and trying to stay, trying to stay up to date on as we, as we work through those, those different pieces.
Brian?
Thanks, Mr. President. Nick, did any chance when you were talking about the legislative update, did they talk at all about the, kind of the current condition of the state budget?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think the concern is the high watermark may have already come and gone. You know, the, the state budget has had tremendous surpluses for the last probably four years. And, you know, so there's, they created tremendous surplus at large rainy day fund along with other budget surpluses. But the concern is, as more of the federal things are going to be shifted down towards the states, and if it doesn't come in the form of block grants and the money doesn't follow the programming, the states are going to be required to pick up a bigger chunk of the tab for a lot of what is already things that people are used to. I know, Brian, in your day job, you have a better handle on it probably even than I do. But one of the big challenges right now is just the, you know, they brought up is the Medicaid situation that's going on. About a third of the state's budget is spent on Medicaid, and if all of a sudden they're not getting the reimbursement from the federal government, it will be a huge impact on, on state budgets, which then, the other largest portion of the state budget is K-12 education. And so there are going to be a lot of people, a lot of programs jockeying for the same, same dollars as we move into the next biennium. And so it's going to continue to be probably a more challenging budget environment moving forward. I don't know what you're hearing in Minnesota.
Yeah, we're, we're dealing with similar, excuse me. I think, you know, the, what we're being confronted with, and I'm guessing Megan has some thoughts on this too, is as, you know, whether you like it or not, the federal government is kind of fundamentally restructuring their financial relationship with the states. And I, what, what we're seeing is, okay, this federal funding is going away, but we still have this, whether it's a need or funding that, that folks expect, whether it higher ed or HHS or education or, you know, general operations, that all of a sudden the spigots turned off and people are asking the states to, to step in, but we only have so much money.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's a big piece. We ran into a couple of issues this summer. We did a lot of lobbying at the federal level because there was money that was already appropriated by the federal Congress for education for this year that all of a sudden got frozen. And so it took a lot of calls to legislators and, and things like that to get that money unfrozen. But the concern is, even whether you are pro U.S. Department of Education or anti, if the, if they cut the programs and they don't, the funding doesn't continue to flow through with block, with block grants, it will put additional pressure on state budgets, but it'll also put pressure on local budgets, especially in K-12. Now fortunately, in Hudson, you know, our federal contributions aren't quite as, quite as high, or what we receive from the federal government is a lot of other districts. But one of the programs that we'll have to watch pretty closely is the food nutrition program because there has been a lot of conversation about restructuring and cutting back the subsidies related to the food nutrition programming from the federal level. And that's, that's, that's the big funding, and that's all part of the farm bills, and that's where it sits. So there's a lot, typically, when it comes to legislative stuff, you know, the federal government doesn't have a whole lot of, you know, a lot of skin in the game, or they don't do much as far as moving things a lot related to K-12 education. And so the biggest lobbying efforts are always at the state level, trying to make sure that we can continue to try to offer and, and get the funding we need. But in the last, you know, six months, eight months, because as you talked about, there's kind of a change in how there, there's going to be, you know, business is going to be done, it now added another front for us to make sure that we are staying vigilant on, which is on the federal level, to make sure both from a regulatory standpoint and a funding standpoint, that we're able to continue to meet our obligations for, for our kids. So.
Mr. President?
Yes, Megan.
Kind of building off of that, I have significant concerns that if Medicaid funding is cut by quite a bit, that, and then we slide into a recession possibly, that last time, things went really bad with the Wisconsin state budget, we saw big cuts or lack of increases to both K-12 and higher education. Like you said, it's the other big part of the budget that isn't healthcare. So I can, I, I foresee that the coming years might be a lot of defense to protect the funding that we do have and that it may be very difficult to get any more, but of course, stopping the loss of funding is equally important. But it's, you know, we've been operating in a surplus and in an economy that, at least on paper, looks like it's doing well. It might not feel that way for people at home. I think it's going to get wild in the next couple of years and not in like a fun, like you're at a water park kind of way. Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to Highway UU property update. Nick?
Yep, so happy to announce that finally, 19 months into the making, the UU property annexation petition has finally made it to the city of Hudson. And so the, now they'll start down that process of annexation and, you know, just to recap, you know, what was holding it up as long as it did is we, in order to get a contiguous, unanimous consent annexation petition, we had a property owner that was blocking essentially that, that annexation and, and causing things to slow way down. The developers have chosen a different route to go, and so I think we'll see how the city embraces that annexation petition. I will say, you know, there's been a lot of questions about a UU property and, oh, the district looks like they're still holding on to 16 acres. Is that for a, you know, a potential elementary school down the road or something along those lines? No, that's, that's not the plan for that. The thought behind the holding on to that 16 acres was, once the property's annexed in, once the property has utilities, that there'd be an opportunity potentially at that point for the district to sell the last 16 acres at a substantially higher asking price to generate additional revenue for the district because there would already be utilities out to it and there would already be in the city of, of Hudson. So it's contrary to what, you know, may be floating out there, we're not holding on to the 16 acres for another elementary school down the road. It is trying to get the best financial situation for the, the school district and the taxpayers as we work through it. So great news on the UU property, and again, more to come. It will take a heavy lift as the, as the city has public hearings that'll be a part of that annexation process, so it'll be important that people get out there and, and attend those and, you know, our goal is to advocate to get that annexed into the city, so.
Mr. President?
Maria?
Thanks. Sorry, guys. Can you just clarify anticipated number of homes for the UU property with this annexation? I know it's been influx a little bit, so what are we thinking at this point?
Yeah, you know, the UU property, you know, that, because it's not a, it's like any piece of property, you can't build a house in every square inch, but, you know, we would anticipate anywhere from 175 to 200 homes on that property. Again, there's kind of two stages to this, so there's our annexation request, which then, you know, if we get it into annexation, then that releases the final stipulation on the sales agreement, so then we can actually close on the property, which then you'll see the sign out there go away and we no longer will own it. And then the next stage, or Stage Two, is really on Derek Builders, and that's where they have to get their development plan through the city process, and that's usually what takes a little bit longer than just the annexation piece. And so the city can say, hey, we want more dense housing, we want less dense, we want more green space, more roads, things like that. I think they have, because they've been working with the city in the past and talked with them, I think they have a plan that's in a pretty good spot, which is somewhere between 175 and 200 houses. And they range in multifamily to single family to more, larger single family. So we are hoping, I think the board talked about it during their discussions 19 months ago, to see entry level, you know, workforce type of young family type of housing. And what we're being told by multiple developers, well, that, that entry level point for them is more like 400 to 450. And not sure exactly how many of them would be in that range, knowing that some of them would be probably upwards of eight, nine, 100,000 to a million dollars.
Thank you. A quick follow-up, sorry.
Sure.
So just kind of extrapolating from what you're saying with regards to Phase One, getting annexation, and then Phase Two, getting their proposal built out, we're kind of looking at least a year plus before we see any movement on that property in?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, we would hope that annexation is done in the next 60 days, and then we're closed out, and then I think their goal would be to be moving dirt next year sometime, not, not 100% sure when, and a lot of it just depends on how much back and forth there is with the developer and the city on, on the property.
And I think the, the 16 acres is an offshoot, not, I mean, it's on the edge of, it's not off, off of UU, it's on Crosby Drive.
Yes.
So it is kind of an individual parcel that was purchased back in the 50s or 60s. So that's kind of, again, thinking, well, when it goes, like you said, when, when those property values go up with the city water, it, that's the reason, can't, can't say enough that it was never a discussion among this board to keep that property for any future school.
Okay, moving on, we have a budget update. Bonnie?
Oh, jeez. So, so enclosed is your packet as just kind of our update of our budget. We're really early in the year, so not much deviations as of yet. And again, this is kind of a draft because we're going to bring it to you back next month when we get our certification of aid and our revenue limit gets finalized with our third Friday comp. We did have a couple variations. First, sick leave payout was higher than anticipated, so we are going to make that adjustment in our budget when we bring that to you. The majority of the other ones were just timing, like either last year we paid it a month before, this year we're paying it a month later. The other one was the textbooks. There was a budget decrease in that. They're not in instruction, student learning, but in that specific object and the timing of it. But really, nothing out of the ordinary, it's just really timing of when we've paid invoices.
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian.
Thanks, Bonnie. A quick question. I don't know if we can answer it with this or not, but last, last spring, early summer, insurance claims were the really a big driver in the budget.
Yep.
Curious where we are since, since we kind of settled on the new insurance benefits for this new year and if you have that information.
I can definitely get you a ballpark. We, we're about $2 million over what our premiums were this year. We're working with the Layer Group, this, that's our new brokerage firm and trying to really dig down into that for you. We're also waiting for our incurred but not reported numbers too, so we could probably bring that to you next month of just how we actually finished up last year.
Holly?
Thank you, Miss. Carly, I'm sorry, I won't touch it anymore. Anyway, I, looking at page two, the bar graph that you have on there, and you have at the bottom of the first bar graph, years, budgeted actual percent. So when you look at the 25, 26 budgeted, the 95,000, does that include payouts that we, of the 15 million that we saved and used for, for the renovations? Do you know what I'm talking about?
So she's asking, you know, why the budget is, is gone up 12 million dollars?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
Sorry, I said the word.
No.
Sorry, I wasn't very clear on that.
Yeah, that includes the $15 million that we're going to utilize for the, to finish up the project. up the project.
Okay, because payments are still outgoing this year.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Bonnie? Okay, moving on to construction.
Sorry, Mr. President. I think because that is confusing, it looks like we're spending 12 million more this year, but it's because we're spending that savings. I don't know if there's a way on these documents, I love a good footnote, that's like, without, you know, minus the construction budget, our, our budget aside from that is 80.7 million, or whatever it is, just so people are aware, because otherwise it looks like we got...
Yeah, the only way we can spread in deficit is to budget it this way, but we can definitely put a footnote in for you. Yep.
Awesome.
Yep.
Okay, now moving on to construction update with Nick.
Yep, just to give a brief update, I don't know if we have, there may be some pictures up there, but we're in a really, really good spot, as we talked about earlier. Projects are finishing up, they're in the middle of the punch lists, trying to finalize some of those items. EP Rock is the last section of that building, I believe, is getting ready to be punched out. And that's the middle, middle section of that building coming up here in the, probably within the next week or so. But, you know, we still have just some things, just some lingering things, still trying to balance the heating and cooling systems. So you may hear that rooms are really, really cold at times, or really, really hot, as they continue to try to get the automation system dialed in, and everything, trying to get everything commissioned. So that's something that's going on. We're still, you know, working through some of the outside stuff and trying to get some of those projects finished up as we, as we work through it. But all in all, we're in a, we're in a really good spot. I know Market and Johnson's wanting to be, be done with it. Point to note, that most, most typical construction contracts have a one-year warranty, because we wrote the contract, we made sure that it was a two-year warranty and everything. So we will do an 11-month and 22-month walkthrough to ensure that everything is still operational and anything that needs to be fixed is still covered under warranty. And so it's a little bit of a surprising for some of the subcontractors, I don't know if they didn't read before they signed, they were just kind of used to a one-year warranty. But, yeah, so they're, they're on the hook to make sure everything is, is, is good for two years. And the thought process behind that is, if something's going to break, it's usually going to break in that first, that first couple of years. And so we want to make sure that, that we have cover and that the taxpayers are covered for anything that may, may break. So we're going to continue to kind of, kind of move along as, with the projects, and we'll probably have a, you know, closeout conversation hopefully in the next 30 to 60 days.
So as far as exterior landscaping, things like that, that's all going to wait till the spring probably?
Nope, they're in the process of getting that done, getting things seeded and getting those things done. You know, there's not a lot of landscaping in the project, so some of the stuff, you know, we did have to cut some trees down, you know, as we talked about, like at EP Rock, for example, trees that could have stayed because they weren't in the way of parking lots and the addition, were dead with Emerald Ashbours. And the trees that we needed to take down happened to be healthy trees. And so we do have some more trees that are going to be planted and will be taking down. Same thing at North Hudson as well. But there's not, we don't do a lot of landscaping in the buildings, because we're not equipped to be a landscape contractor to maintain it. So we try to find low maintenance items when we look at stuff. And we're still dealing with, you know, some stuff long-term that people had planted trees too close to roofs and things like that, and then it plugs up roof drains, which can cause real issues for, stuff like that. So we're still dealing with some of that stuff. But for the most part, we're, we should be, prior to snowfall, projects, you know, completely done, 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 so.
Erin?
Nick, I have to put you on the spot, I'm sorry. There's been a lot of questions around EP Rock and the letters that are inside that building. Could you give a clear answer as to what purpose those letters serve pertaining to academics? Like, why are they there? How much did they cost? And as board members who, I was not on the board when any of this went through, so I'm not trying to like remove myself, but were board members like aware that these things were in the line, and should board members have maybe been a little bit more diligent about going through that?
Okay, yep. So the letters were always part of the designs that we had put out, from the very beginning, the architects put out. It wasn't something that was added. So because they were part of the original set of plans, the way the projects are bid, so they're bid out in work scopes. And so we don't get an actual line item budget for every single work scope. Like, if you asked me right now, how much did you spend on each toilet, I couldn't tell you. We have a $3 million plumbing bid that says we're going to take care of everything in the plans related to plumbing for $3 million. And so I, I don't have a number for you, because it's never been given to us. We, we don't have it. It's part of the finished carpentry and building works projects or packages in there. Just as people have asked us, can you tell us exactly how much the new addition costs at North Hudson, or the main office at EP? We, we don't have, it doesn't break down that way, because the projects are broken down by work scopes, not by individual parts of the, parts of the building. So the, you know, those have been, like you said, those have been all the way through. They've been in the design, they're, they are in aesthetic. I mean, there, there's not like a huge academic thing that's related to it, it's part of the aesthetics, similar to other parts of the buildings, that, you know, we have some different aesthetic pieces and stuff like that, so. But I don't, I don't have an answer for it, because we've never been given a cost related to the letters, because they're part of a much larger bid packages.
Mr. President?
Megan?
I just want to say, I, I know that there's been a lot of focus on this costing supposedly $75,000, but I, you know, and like, does it have an academic purpose? You know, like, you could say it doesn't have an academic purpose to have the words "North" painted there, but it looks nice, and it looks fun, and what does, you know, like, someone said to me, "The paint job looked too fancy and expensive in the middle school." And I'm thinking, I think kids walking into a school and it looking fun, and it being a beautiful place, you know, the renovations are not over the top, these are not, it's not like there's crystal chandeliers and fancy everything. It's like, you could argue, a playground has no academic purpose. But of course, we know that it helps children learn, and playing is good for kids. So I don't know, fun is good for children, I would argue.
I would add that, you know, like at the cafeteria at EP Rock, if you look at the ceiling, it's many different colors of panels hanging from the ceiling, and it could have just been a, a, you know, a drop ceiling that would have done an insulating job and would have been functional. But what that did for the space, it was part of the bid package, it was part of the architectural design, and it does create, you know, a uniqueness, and it's, it's, you know, it does the same job. And I, I, I don't want to focus on, you know, those, those letters, I was on the board when those bid packages were shown at every board meeting, and it was in the package, we showed them on, on the screen, that was on the, on the meetings that were telecast. My only concern about those letters was that originally, they looked like they were going to be like drywall, and we're going to have kids touching them, you know, climbing on it maybe, you know? So we had to make them, make sure that they were a durable surface, so it doesn't become a maintenance issue. Again, the focus on that is not why we are having discussions about potentially closing schools. Anyone else?
Brian?
I was just going to point out that, correct me if I'm wrong, but the EP Rock, North Hudson and middle school projects were funded with a capital referendum, right?
Correct.
That went on the ballot in, I think, the spring of 2023.
Correct.
Yep. And, and that referendum passed, it went to the voters, the voters said yes. On the same ballot was, I think, an $8 million ongoing operating referendum. Ongoing, right?
Yes.
Like we're stuck with right now. And, and that one didn't pass, and it, the, those, those projects went in front of the voters, and the voters said, "We want you to do this to these buildings, we don't think we want to fund operating right now, we don't think there's a need." It was a stark message, it's disappointing, but I think that's an important part of this.
And to a lesser degree, I know Nick has mentioned it, but people have said, well, you've got logos on the soap dispensers in the bathrooms. And again, you know, I, in, in facilities, those, those providers, those vendors, they offer you free dispensers with free logos, and you just buy the soap from them. And as long as we're paying the same amount of soap that we normally, and it's through a competitive bid process, you know, it's, it's not something we said, hey, we want our logo at an extra cost. So, it's just, yes, Erin?
I just want to point out something. As I'm listening to you guys here, it's almost kind of comical, I'm sorry. We're comparing playground equipment and soundboards that are in lunchrooms to big, enormous letters that are sitting in a hallway serving zero purpose. I think that is a very big difference from what we're talking about. I'm not sure where Megan came up with $75,000. Nick just said that he had no idea what that number is. So I just want to clarify, do we, is that a number that somebody in the community threw out? Where did that number come from? And my concern with bringing this up is, to me, it looks like an enormous waste in spending, whether it's $75,000 or $5,000. I don't think that we're, as a district, in a position to be looking at something that we definitely don't need, that does not show a benefit to education. The paint's great, soundboards, obviously there's a purpose for them, but going forward, we need to be very careful about how we're spending our dollars and putting them where our kids are.
Mr. President? $75,000 is what people have told me they heard, and it's what I've heard via email, people asking. So that's why I threw that number out. It seems to be somehow a number that some people have heard.
Just wanted to know where the number came from. Thank you, Megan.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the enrollment update.
All right. So since Andrea's not here, I'll take the enrollment update. So this is kind of how we're sitting right now. These enrollments were updated towards the end of last week, and where we're sitting in each of the buildings. Leave it's on the screen behind me, if for some reason it's not, let me know. Where, the way you read this is number of sections in each of the building by grade, and then the average class size for those, for those sections. If it is green, it is under the class size guideline. If it is red, it is over the class size guideline. If you go back, we started sharing this district-wide as a public document over the last three or four years, so that people could see, you know, when we're looking at, when do we add a section, when do we try to take a section away? The difference in the green colors is not that we don't know how to change it up, it's, we actually, you know, had board members that have asked for different green colors, and if they're way under class size guidelines compared to, you know, how much far away, how far away. Just a reminder, class size guidelines are 18 to 22 for K-2, and 22 to 27 for grades three through five. Enrollment right now at the elementary is about 1938. Our 4K right now is not included in that, total of about 306. And one of the things to just kind of keep in mind, and this is something that has us keeping a very close eye on, is last year's 4K was in the 330s, and it generated about 307 kindergartners. And so if, if that same ratio holds true, we could be looking at a kindergarten class somewhere in the neighborhoods of 270 to 280, which also having a fifth grade class go out, that's 352, we could see a decline just at the elementary level of somewhere between 50 and 70 students, just by the, the changes in those enrollments. Part of why we see a drop in 4K from 4K to kindergarten is, we do have large open enroll in in 4K, and it happens to do with, because we have community partners and providers, that people that live in other districts are already providing, getting childcare provided by those partners, but want to take advantage of our 4K program while they're there, and they have every intention of their child returning back to their homeschool district for starting in kindergarten. When you look at our overall, if you keep going down with middle school and high school enrollments, you can kind of see we've been tracking it and where we're sitting. Middle school enrollment is down a couple kids from September 4th, and down about, about 10 kids from, from middle of August. The high school is down about 20 to 23 kids from that same time period. And a lot of that has to do with, as the summer goes on, especially at the secondary, people will let us know they're coming to the, to the, to the school, but of those that move out of the district, we don't necessarily always get the notified until the new district sends us requests for records, usually a couple days sometimes into when our school year would be, depending on how that goes. And so that kind of rolls into, I believe, the next item on the agenda, which is the third Friday count, unless anybody has questions about the enrollment, the 25, 26 enrollment.
Erin?
I just have a quick question. Being a new board member, could you just please repeat what the enrollment number guidelines are one more time for me, so I just know? You said K through 2 is up to 22?
Yep, so they're right at the bottom of the page there. It's K-2 is 18 to 22.
Okay.
And 3 through 5 is 22 to 27.
Okay.
And they're guidelines, they're not hard caps or anything like that, so.
What is the hard cap? Do we have a hard cap or no?
We don't, we don't have a hard cap. As you can see, fifth grade at Rivercrest right now has two classes, there each have 28 in them, so they're one over. You know, if we start getting more than two or three kids over, you know, we start to get to close to 29 or 30, then we start looking at adding an additional section. And, you know, we just, we just, again, it's, it's a, we try to gauge it, and then there comes to be a point in the summer where there's kind of that point of no return, where trying to find qualified staff to add sections, you're, you're better off having an extra couple of kids in a class with staff that we know are going to do a great job than kind of to roll the dice sometimes hiring in August.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead with third Friday, if you'd like.
Okay, so third Friday count, you can see up on the screen. So third Friday count is our official count that we get when we're, we take account, third Friday in September, we take account that is second, second Friday in January. These are the numbers in which we upload to the state to ensure that, that's how we generate revenue. And so what you see on this sheet is, the numbers that are dark or bolded are from January of '25. So essentially, that would be last year's numbers, and then the, the non-bold numbers would be this third Friday count, which just happened on Friday. And just to kind of walk through a couple different things on third Friday enrollment count, we were anticipating being down about 50 students across the district when we were building our budget projections. And just to give you an idea, you know, how we generate or how we set our budget is based on the number of students we have. We are, based on this third Friday count, it looks like we are going to be down 147 students this year. So almost 100 more students than we were originally anticipating. People can ask, where, where is a lot of that coming from? If you look at the, the column that says DPI totals, so that is, that number is the number for each school or each, or each program, inclusive of students that open enroll out. So for example, in 4K, we had 11 students that opened enrolled out last year for 4K, and this year we have nine students that are open enrolling out. But overall, we had 298 resident students in our school district for 4K last year. This year, in 4K, we have 268 resident students in our school district. The open enroll in, so these would be students coming to us from other school districts, you can see that last year we had 34, and this year is 46. So that's great that we had more come in, but that number has kind of ebb and flowed since we started 4K in 2018. And we've typically kept about anywhere from seven to 10 of those students in, starting in kindergarten. And a lot of it has to do with, some of them may stay at Trinity in St. Pat's, some of them may be out of district, you know, students that go back to their home districts and things along those lines. If you look at, you know, overall student enrollments, and, and where we're sitting on, on some of these different components, you can kind of see at the different buildings where we are sitting with overall DPI enrollment. And then at the bottom of this screen, we also are required to track students across the district that aren't attending the school district. And so you can see kind of where things shake out. St. Patrick's School was down about 10 students in their count, and Trinity Academy was up about two students in their count. The homeschool number is not a finalized number, because homeschool is...
Tim, do you know?
October 15th, so October 15th is when homeschool has to report, so people that are homeschooling their children have to file with the district. And so that's why it looks like it's, it's such a different number. So it will, you know, that number will change and it will grow, so we don't think we'll have a big drop-off of, of kids homeschooling or anything like that. It, it's been a pretty consistent, pretty consistent number. So overall, I guess the... So overall, I guess the highlights of this is, if you look, our open enroll out, so the number of students open enrolling out of our district, which is the OE/OD line, I don't know if Tim's highlighting that, are you kind of highlighting that or pointing to it, Tim? Okay. We had 183 out in 100, last year, and we had 167 this year, so that's good. But on the in, we have 30 more kids coming in on open enrollment in this year than what we had last year. And so that means that our surplus, as it relates to open enrollment, is growing, which it's not, it's just the difference between a surplus and a deficit, so that money comes in as essentially miscellaneous revenue into the district as we, as we work through that. So it's important to have it as a surplus versus a deficit. We got here in 2015, it was about a million dollar deficit, and now it's substantial, about a $400,000 or $500,000 surplus.
Go ahead, Molly.
So if, with the open enroll into the district, in the past, I believe we've capped enrollment, especially back in those 2011 years when we were really overcrowded, would that be something that we would do if we ran out of space?
Yeah, if we ever ran out of space, you could absolutely cap open enrollment, if that was a, if that was a concern. We took the caps off of open enrollment in 2016, 2017, because when a child open enrolls in, the district they come from sends us, Bonnie, do you know what the number is this year? Is it about $10,000 that follows that kid into the district? Almost, almost $12,000 that follows that child into the district. So it definitely is a benefit, especially the way we set it up is, we only allow open enrollment in, in areas where we have spaces and classrooms. So the revenue comes in, but we don't necessarily have to take on another expenditure in order to accommodate that.
And are we at the top of the, are we accepting open enrollment special ed students at this time? We aren't, are we?
No.
Okay, that's full.
I forget what month, but there's, I believe January, February, the board sets how many spaces we would have for special ed students, and last year, maybe the year before, it was set at zero.
Mr. President, if we could go back to the enrollment analysis tab, just because it shows the open enrollment students by grade, I just, you know, the budget projections going forward are still built on assuming we'll lose 50 students a year, and we're down 150 this year. And then if you look at the bottom for elementary school, you know, not by elementary school, but the total, we've got, you know, pretty significant drop between fifth grade and kindergarten, right? We're at 352 in fifth grade. If you go to the next page, you can see our middle school classes are all around 350, and then our high school classes are all above 400. And so this trend, you know, like, I'm hoping we're going to bottom out soon, but, you know, like, this is, this kindergarten class is the COVID babies, mine was born April of 2020, that was awesome. I mean, she's awesome, but it was not a great time. And we haven't seen birth rates go up since then. I'm just, I just wonder what the budget, like, do you think we're only going to go down by 50 again next year? I hope so, but it's a, it's a little concerning to see this trend, given what's happened with just demographics over the past 12 years.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we're going to, we'll put together some additional new budget projections, Bonnie and her team will be working on that with the new numbers. The one, you know, the one thing that happens in the, in the finance for Wisconsin is, you don't lose all that funding in year one, it's basically phased in over three years, and there's a declining enrollment exemption that helps soften the burden. But within three, by the end of three years, you feel the full weight of the declining enrollment. So when you are down 147 kids at roughly $13,000, $14,000 a kid, it is like one, was that 1.6, 1.8 million dollars just kind of walks out of the budget. But it doesn't always have, you know, equal expenditures that walk out with it. And so that's where it makes, you know, makes it a little bit more challenging. We're not going to shrink to zero. I mean, it's, there will come a point of equilibrium. We might, we just not, we just haven't hit it yet, because we're still declining, and I think at the elementary, you know, it may end up being somewhere between, you know, 290 and 310 kids per class, and if that's, that ends up being the case, you know, over the next couple of years, instead of having 1,900 and roughly 40 students in K5, we could be more like 1,800 to 1,850, so down yet another, you know, 100-plus elementary students. And so there's just, there's no data point that shows that it's, that it's going the other direction right now, but we haven't hit, we haven't hit the bottom yet, but I, we got to be getting close.
Yeah, I just, I work in higher ed, and for a long time, colleges have been talking about the demographic cliff that we're hitting in the upper Midwest and nationwide, except for the southeast, and we're kind of at a peak of high school graduates right now. And then if you look, because, you know, like, organizations like WIC does all these demographics nationwide and by state, the number of high school graduates is just projected to keep going down. So in my, in my day job in higher ed, there's a lot of panic around, like, there's just not going to be as many college students, but of course, that means there's not as many students coming through K-12 either, so.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to geek out on numbers, just like you, Megan, because you know, and you guys know that I'm very concerned about population decline overall. This is the stuff that scares me, is without immigration, our country's population will start to decline in 10 years. And I'm really, really concerned, I mean, this is just an offshoot, and I don't hate to take this off, but when I see Gen Z, my kids and their friends saying, "We can't afford to have kids," or older, "yet we're getting married and we're never going to have kids," I'm very concerned. So that's just my two cents on that subject.
Anyone else? Brian?
Thanks, Molly. It's concerning to me as well. I wanted to pivot back to the budget, though, if we could.
Whatever.
It's my passion project. I'm looking at the Baird budget model, that's in our long-term planning folder. And in rough numbers, on that surplus deficit line, once, once this kind of, we're down, what, compared to budget, what we assumed in the budget, 90-ish kids? That's, by the time it phases in in '28, '29, we're going to add another 1.8-ish million to the deficit per year?
That's, that would be if we, you know, we've been making cuts along the way, so as we've reduced students, we've, we've cut staff, and so, all the way through the organization. And so that would be if everything held steady, which, if we continue to decline at this rate, we have to continue to cut, because we wouldn't need as many people in order to deliver the same amount of education. Yep.
But, so, in '28, '29, if we're showing a 1.6 billion, or million, excuse me, million-dollar deficit, roughly double or more in that school year. If we don't make commensurate, I mean, obviously, we will manage the budget each year, but just trying to wrap my head around those numbers.
Anybody else? Okay, no further questions? Thank you, Nick. Moving to Tracy with moments that matter.
Yes, thank you. So Cheers for Peers has been our staff recognition, staff recognizing staff for about 10 years now, and figuring it's time for an update to how we go about doing that. We had some feedback about how we could expand how people are nominated, so having staff, students, parents, volunteers, also being able to nominate our staff for recognition. Similar to Cheers, this recognition highlights the meaningful everyday actions of Hudson School District staff that reflect the heart of our work and our shared values, and this will be something that we'll push out quarterly. HR will work on selecting about five recipients of that recognition, and because it's a smaller number of folks, we will be able to dig into the story a little bit more, and then share that out to our public, versus the very short snippets that we had previously with Cheers for Peers.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I really like this proposal. I think over the last couple of weeks, I know we've all been getting a lot of emails, and with those comes some very heartfelt stories around our, the staff here, and teachers, and the work that they do every day, that really does go unseen by the greater community. And so I love that you are trying to lift that up. Thank you.
Megan.
I concur, and this maybe is not my place to throw this out there, but I've seen at the staff banquet how excited people get when you can win a personal day through a drawing. I'm just throwing that, I don't know if that's a possible recognition idea, maybe, I don't know. So maybe I'm going too far, but I see how excited people get about that.
Yes, they do. I would defer to somebody else who has their, has the ability to make those financial decisions.
Mr. President?
Aaron.
I think you did a great job, Tracy. I think this looks really good, and I'm excited to see it roll out.
Thank you, and kudos to Andrea, who's not here tonight, because the bulk of this is her work.
And this will be less hyperventilating at board meetings while she's ripping through.
It was nice to be able to recognize a large number of people, but this, this will be nice to focus on a handful of people and really highlight their work.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the long-term school planning and possible school closure discussion.
Mr. President?
Maria.
So as we have been preparing for, all of us, over the past couple of weeks, and from the community conversation and listening to that, I'd like to propose a framework for today's discussion. And the reason for the framework is, the community has reached out with a lot of questions, both at that meeting and subsequent through many emails, which I know we have all read. And we need to be able to respond, and they need to be able to hear from us on each of those topics. And so just, one of the hats I wear professionally is facilitating longer, larger groups' conversations, and so I thought, how might we do this? What I'd like to propose, just to help the discussion, not only for all of us, because I know for me, I'm really interested in hearing what each board member is thinking, I also want to make sure that the community, live streaming and here tonight, has that ability to hear each one of us voice our thoughts, our reflections, and maybe additional questions we have. What I might propose is a structure, something of a brief opening statement from each board member, if they'd like to make it, just what's resonating with them right now, just something simple, one to two minutes, and then do what's called a facilitated round robin. And that's just maybe where you call on each of us, ordered by last name, to walk through each topic. So start with housing, or we could use the discussion guide, the questions that Tracy summarized, and put the themes up, and just go through each of those, reflecting on what we have heard, what resonates with us about that topic, and then wrapping up with another round robin discussion on the options for consideration. And I'm proposing we do them separately, because I think if we just dive into a discussion on the options, we're going to lose the nuance of some of the very rich and important questions people have posed, and I don't want people to feel like they're not answered. And then maybe closing with, just closing reflections, because I'm sure I'm going to learn something and a perspective from my fellow board members here tonight about how they're thinking about it, and how I'm walking away, and I would imagine others are as well. So for consideration, not wedded to it, but just to help all of us kind of walk through this together.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I would say that I had spoken with Nick earlier about going through those, work that Tracy had done with the questions from the community meeting, and answering some of those, or from, you know, and I know it's on our website, but, you know, the questions and the answers, but would you be okay, or would you think, Nick, would you be okay going through those questions?
You bet. So I will hit on these briefly, but I also want to point people to the August 25th meeting, where we did a slide deck and answered probably about 90, 95% of the questions in a much greater detail with slides and everything else. But on our website, there is a document called Potential School Closures: Community Meeting Response Themes and Questions. You can find it on our website, the whole document is there, you can feel free to look at it. I don't want to sit here and read it to you, because everybody is capable of that. But the general, the general themes that, you know, that came up were, you know, value of small schools and class sizes, strong support for Holton Elementary, distrust in the board and decision-making process, concerns about data, projections and timing, financial concerns and alternative solutions, impact on students in the community, and those were kind of the six, six main themes that came out of it. And within those themes, there were a series of questions, and so I'll try to touch base on some of those. You know, people have asked, will schools be overcrowded if one or more schools close? We don't believe they will, we would still be using the same class size guidelines that the board has approved over multiple years, which is K through second grade, 18 to 22 in grades three through five, 22 to 27. Even if we did have to run at 100%, you know, all the sections, four sections in, in the four-section buildings, and three sections in the three-section building, we still have, we still have space to accommodate special education, music, and specials, and 4K programming, and for and after-school care, and for sure, at least in three of the four buildings, we'd be able to have a 4K wrap care option in the actual building as we go through it. Somebody asked the question, how will, or there was a kind of a series of questions, how will school closures impact student achievement? You know, we remain committed to student achievement for all of our kids, and, you know, we've talked about this at different times, I feel our, all of our elementaries operate at a very high level, depending on the year. One elementary may outperform another elementary on the state forward exams, but we feel very confident that our education and student achievement will be able to remain high as we work, as we work through this. It said to some, it appears the decision's already been made, why go through the process? To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe you guys have made a decision yet, I've had people even ask me, Nick, won't you make a recommendation to the board on this? And I've said, this is a bigger decision than one person can recommend, and that's why there's seven elected board members that are making the decision, but the administration's here to provide, provide you with whatever information you need. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Nick. Tracy, just, YouTube keeps going in and out, so people who are live streaming, they're, they're having technical difficulties, but they are going to put the fully recorded version up afterwards, so I just...
Yep, so, yeah, if YouTube is not working well, we will get the full recorded meeting uploaded, so that nobody has to worry about not having access to it as well. There were concerns about the data, how accurate are enrollment projections, and how far into the future do they go? You know, over the past 10 years, we've used multiple demographers to look at our enrollment. If you go to the slide deck that I presented back in August, August 25th meeting, showed the applied populations, one that were done in 2022, utilizing the most current, at least, census data, and then also the most current enrollment data, and housing turnover rates and things like that at the time. Even with those data points, we've underperformed their most conservative models. We had an enrollment study done in 2018, we've underperformed that enrollment model, and we had one done in 2015, and we've underperformed that one. And so if there was concern about the enrollment projections, it wouldn't be that we're going to outperform them, at least for the three different models with three different demographers that we've had over the last 10 years. And there are some continuing things that are causing pressure, as you guys, I think, have alluded to, which is the continued long-term downward trend in elementary enrollment projections. The municipal birth rates are down, the average age of residents in all of our municipalities, which was actually put together by the St. Croix County Economic Development Housing Study, and shows all of our developments, or, sorry, all of our municipalities being anywhere from seven to 10 years older, from 2010 to 2020, as far as becoming a more aging population. And the attendance area, in our attendance area, the most enrollment growth, because we don't have people that are not school age attending our buildings, but, you know, it's, we have, we've seen the most growth in population has been age 55 and older for the last 10-plus years. If you just look at the 2010 census... fifty-five and older for the last ten-plus years. If you just look at the 2010 census to 2020 census, and those slides again are in that, are in that item, or in that slide deck from the 25th. Are there alternative budget cuts that could prevent school closures? Will school closures increase busing costs? You know, there are a variety of budget cuts. We talked about them in January. That is kind of a cadre of, of, of different options and things like that. Programming cuts, class size cuts, staffing cuts, things along those lines. As far as busing cost, I think it's important for people to understand is the way our busing program works is we don't, we don't bus all of the kids to their previous building and then bus them to a new building. What will happen is once boundaries are set, then we work with the, work with a company called Traversa that helps us start to create the most efficient routes. We put in the same parameters that we currently have in, that we currently have in the system. I did have our transportation department run our current year, percent of students that are eligible for transportation. At Holton, ninety-eight percent of the kids are eligible for transportation. At North Hudson, fifty-six point three percent of our kids are eligible for transportation. Willow River, sixty-four percent of our kids are eligible for transportation. EP Rock, sixty-six percent of our kids are eligible for transportation. Rivercrest, one hundred percent of our kids are eligible for transportation. And Hudson Prairie, eighty-six percent of our kids are eligible for transportation. So when you think about the way that works, we don't anticipate a huge change in the transportation cost, but we can't give actual bus routes until we know which buildings are going to be open and what are the final boundaries, because we need the boundaries in order to determine a child in a certain house, which school they're going to. And so it's, people say, well, we need to know all that first. Well, we, we, there's just, there's not the ability to build that many different scenarios. It just doesn't, it just doesn't work that way. Impact on students in the community, what considerations are we giving to the impact that school closures have on students, families, staff, community? Tremendous concern about this, obviously. We, we have talked to staff. I know there was misinformation out there saying this is already a done deal, because I've met with staff last week to talk about school closures and that it was already done. And that's, that's not the case. What we did is, we did do building forums last week, and we have more building forums this week. We do building forums three times a year. We've been doing them at least every year since I've been here for the ten, eleven years, been here to talk about a variety of district-related questions that, that staff may have. Obviously, school closures are a district-related question that staff have. And, you know, one of the things that we do know, unless the board changes a decision, is that on August 11th, the board chose to eliminate the option that keeps all six elementary open, elementaries open. So that means, at least administratively, we have to put into motion that there is going to be at least one school, if not two school closings, moving forward. And so we are trying to work with staff and let them understand that this is the, this is the process, this is what the handbook language says and things like that. But we have never conveyed the message that a specific school is closing, contrary to what some might be out there on social media. So, but staff do want to know what's going on, just like parents want to know, and kids want to know as well. So we are very cognizant of that. And one of the things that also happens in this process is the, if the board, depending on which, which building closes or multiple buildings close, one of the pieces that we do anytime we re-boundary the district is we do opportunities for the, when the boundaries are set, for kids and families to get to visit their new buildings and what that looks like and, and that process. Try to remind people that yes, there will be boundary changes across the district. If, even if just one building closes, it doesn't mean that only the children in that building or the staff in that building are the only ones that are going to be affected. We've talked about this at multiple meetings. The reboundering of the district will cause us to potentially have to move students in a variety of buildings. More than likely, almost all of the buildings will have some level of impact. And I remind people, whether you're at Hudson Prairie and now going to Rivercrest, or you're at Rivercrest and now going to EP Rock, or EP Rock, going to North Hudson, is, is, you know, the same outcome for those families as if the board chooses to close Holton or Willow. For them, effectively, their school is closed and they're going to a new building. So it will impact, regardless of what the decision is, more than just Holton families or Willow families, depending on what the board decides to do. There was a question about data, why are we using demographic and housing data from twenty-two or older instead of more current data? We, once the board made the decision not to move forward with all six elementaries or to remove that option, we did reach out and entered into an agreement with MGT Consulting out of Florida to look at our, to look at demographics again. And the only reason we're doing a demographic study again on top of the boundaries is so that if we're going to set the boundaries, they're good for about eight to ten years. That's what we try to get out of elementary boundaries. And you have to have some additional demographic information. They will do a new set of enrollment projections that will carry out ten years. But we have no information at this point that leads us to believe that their demographic projections are going to be substantially different than any of the other data that we have currently. The difference is we'll get probably another five years' worth of, worth of data. Given the past enrollment projections were incorrect, why should the community trust the current ones? Enrollment projecting is, is both an art and a science. It, it, it takes a variety of, of different calculations into consideration. There are different things that are impossible for enrollment consultants to project or predict. You know, nobody thought there was going to be a worldwide pandemic in twenty. So that obviously had some chilling effect. But what we're hearing from different demographers is it's not as though birth rates have bounced up. They're continuing to tick down. A lot of what happens in the enrollment studies, when you're trying to project what enrollments, what a kindergarten class is going to look like eight years from now, nine years from now, you're trying to predict how many babies are going to be born essentially in the next four years within our district boundaries. And it's not a perfect science, but they look at a lot of different data points, and it's what they do for a living. Some people will ask, why don't we do it in-house? That's just not our skill set. That's not something that we have the ability to do. And so that's why we, we do contract that out. Have you surveyed current families with children under five or new homeowners to get an accurate real-time enrollment count? We have not done, we don't, we wouldn't have a way to, to get an accurate number, other than doing what the United States Census Bureau does, which would be going house to house and, and, and conducting that information. We don't have the resources to do that. People ask, you know, I have a three-year-old at home, you're not taking them into consideration. Well, we, we are, because we're expecting that there's probably, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred, three-year-olds in our district right now, and that there's two-hundred and, or, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-plus two-year-olds and one-year-olds. Because if not, then our enrollment's going to go down even more. And so we look at historical numbers to be able to kind of dictate that as well. But for some people that aren't enrolled in the school or don't have kids enrolled in the school, it's very difficult for us to get that information. But adding the 4K program has given us yet another year of information, so that has really, that has really helped. Why is the decision being rushed when the budget deficit isn't forecasted for another few years? Why not wait and gather more information? I know that at times it feels like it's going fast, but we have been talking about this conversation for at least three years. There's a document online where there's been a hundred, over a hundred communications talking about this specifically over the last three years. And, you know, our, our budget projections are our best estimates of what we think are going to turn out. We built them on what we thought were, continue to be reasonable numbers. This year, it turns out that we weren't even conservative enough in our budget estimates. And so we'll be, you know, revitalizing them as well. But again, when the board chooses to close the buildings, is, you know, is that your discretion? But, you know, the, the budget deficits are coming. There's, there's not a single data point that we have that points to the fact that we're going to avoid some of these budget deficits that are coming up. Do the projected savings account for the increased cost of busing, hiring redistrict consultants, and potential modifications to the remaining schools? So the, right now, those are, those are cost savings based on what we believe it would, we would get for realistic savings related to building closures. For example, when we look at the class sizes, because there's a lot of information about class sizes, when we started to look at building these different models, and worked with the building principals to build these different models, we didn't take the current class numbers and divide them by twenty-two in K2 and divide them by twenty-seven in three-five. We took the model, or we took the current class size, divided them by twenty in K2, so kind of a mid, midpoint, and by twenty-five in three through five, to give us about how many sections we were going to need, based on the different models. And what we did is, if it needed fourteen-point-one sections, then we rounded it up to fifteen. So, you know, the average class size, instead of it being twenty, might be like nineteen-point-four as you work through it. And so those, those then is, were built then to, to figure out about how much staffing we need, which then turns around and generates the savings. As far as busing costs go, bus routes cost us somewhere between sixty and seventy thousand dollars a route for the year. You know, we could potentially need, you know, some years we have to add a route, some years we take routes away. We're constantly looking for the most efficient way to bus kids and transport them. We would not change our guidelines related to busing, which means, you know, we still have our safe routes that we want to have. So there are some areas that are less than a mile from school, but because we don't have a safe walking route, we still bus those kids. But also, we'd have the guideline of no more than an hour on the bus. That's what our current guideline is, as it relates to, relates to busing. We don't believe, based on the number of kids that are currently eligible for busing, that we would have a substantial change in our busing cost. One way, though, we also don't believe there's going to be a substantial savings in busing cost either. You know, it, it, it kind of really depends on how the boundaries shake out. If the option of closing schools were off the table, what other solutions would the district consider? Have you explored cutting administrative costs? Yes, we have cut administrative costs, and we have cut secretaries and custodians and paraprofessionals, and we've cut additional before and after-school help. We have made reductions across the board. We've cut over three million dollars in staffing reductions from administration to teachers, to a variety of different, of different folks. We've decreased the number of elementary principals. We've decreased the number of district office administrators. We have reduced the number of assistant principal workdays. We've added additional responsibilities to administrators to, to do some of those things as well. But, you know, the equipment and things like that, you can see on this, on this document, there is, there is expenses. And, you know, even if we were to cut all of the administrators in the district, we still would not cover the budget deficit. So I think that's what people have to understand. If you take all of the money we spent on all of the administrators across the district, it still does not cover the budget deficit. So it's just something that people, it's just, that's the reality that we're in. People have asked us about foundations and, and, you know, can't we look at foundations to, to do this? I think there'll be more discussion about that. But many foundations view public, public schools as just that, the public, and that they should be funded by tax dollars. Not that foundations and donations don't come in, in the ways of, of one-time expenses and capital projects and things like that. But I've yet to see another school district that's been able to privately raise enough money to cover these kind of deficits on an annual basis. What happened to the money from the recent referendum, which was supposed to help retain staff and maintain class sizes? I can give you an example right off the bat, as Bonnie talked about with the health insurance cost. Of the five million dollars, one-point-two million dollars went to increased healthcare costs that's on a reoccurring basis. We've maintained our classes and our curriculum. We've kept our elementary class sizes, tried to keep them within the guidelines. As the board added several sections this summer, at about a hundred thousand dollars a section, we're able to continue to maintain our extracurriculars and, and also making sure that we can pay our staff so that we're competitive in the hiring arena as well. What is the plan for empty school buildings? If they're closed, will they be sold and how will the proceeds be used? There has been absolutely zero discussion as to how the buildings would be used at this point. I mentioned at the last meeting, we've had multiple developers that have reached out to me in the last month and a half since it's been very public that there's the potential of school closures, asking for either floor plans or what the district would be interested in doing with these buildings. And I have said to them repeatedly, there are no buildings for sale, and the board has not made any decisions on that. So therefore, I don't have any information to provide for you. In addition, we don't provide floor plans of our active buildings because it becomes a safety issue for our buildings. And so we are not putting those out. The buildings could be used, could be sold, and those funds that come in, come in as one-time revenue. It's called miscellaneous revenue. Comes into the district and can be used. It's a one-time funding source as, as we look through it. About the logistics and future planning, what will the new school boundaries and bus routes look like? How long will bus rides be for the youngest students? Again, once we get the process, once we understand what we're boundarying the district around, the administration will be working with MGT consultants to come up with multiple options for, for the elementary boundaries. There will be community nights, and there will be survey feedback. We'll take that feedback. The consultants will then turn around and make adjustments to them. They'll put it back out again, do more community engagement nights, more feedback, and, and then make more adjustments before it finally goes to the board, looking at, depending on how the process goes, sometime in February, as we, as we work through this. It's a little different process than we used the last time. The last time, we had about twenty people on a committee that helped set those boundaries. The thought process is to get more feedback from a wider group of people by having open community meetings and survey feedback, rather than just having a smaller group of, of people making those decisions. If we close two schools, what is the plan if and when enrollment increases again in the future? How will we avoid the Stillwater situation is in? Couple things, and I talked about this in the August 25th meeting. The Stillwater situation is very different than our situation. Stillwater knew that they were going to have tremendous growth on the south side of their district because the Met Council had taken off the, or lot sizes for Lake Elmo, and they knew that area was going to explode in growth. There was not a, oh, we shut too many buildings and now all of a sudden we have to build buildings. They always planned on building buildings on the south side of their district, and they closed buildings where they didn't have as many children. So there's a little bit of difference there. The other piece is, is we have no piece of information like Stillwater has, that we are going to have the type of growth that you're seeing on the north side of I-94 closer to Woodbury. And, and our, our topography and our, the way the townships have grown up around the city of Hudson, do not lend themselves to being a Stillwater or a Woodbury. We just, we don't have the type of big, wide-open expansive pieces of land to, for that to happen. If enrollment was to increase, there are options that the board could take down the road. If they had to add on to buildings, they could add on to buildings without having to go to referendum. However, we would have to see tremendous enrollment increases to even need to exercise that option. And again, we don't have a single data point that points that we would need to, to need to do those things. How can you guarantee that class sizes will remain within the guidelines when many of them are already in, at the max? I think if you look at the, the class size guidelines that, that we had up there, many of them aren't at the max. There, I believe, is only one section, I'm just trying to pull it up on my computer. I'm sorry, there are two, two, two areas where they're over the, the max guidelines, that we have more sections under the guidelines. So we would continue to monitor and do what we have continually done. Our goal is, if we're going to have, if we're going to err, we're going to err on the side of being under the class size guidelines than, than being over. But every once in a while, we, you know, we have to, like, for example, Willow River, second grade, has forty-five students. If we add a third section to that, it drops it to fifteen. Right now, it's at twenty-two-point-five, which means one class has twenty-two and one class has twenty-three. So one is within the class size guideline, one is one student over. So we will continue to try to keep an eye on those things. But we do feel like we have plenty of space, regardless of what the board decides, in order to maintain our class size guidelines. Will the remaining schools have enough physical space for 4K wrap, round care, special education services, specials, and other programs? Yes, the principals have gone through, we've, regardless of what the option is, if the board chooses to close two, or if they choose to close one elementary building, we do have enough space to have 4K, 4K at all of our elementary buildings. However, I will say that we only have 4K at three of our six elementaries currently, and we've never had 4K at the same two buildings, or the same buildings every year since we started in 2018. People asked at the last meeting, the community meeting on Monday, why do you have community-based programming? You shouldn't have community-based programming. It should all be in the schools. Well, in 2017, 2016, when we went to get 4K programming, just to give people some background on it, we were one of only eleven school districts in the state of Wisconsin out of four-hundred-and-twenty-one that didn't have 4K. At that time, the board said, and none of which are members sitting up here, is that they did not want to be in competition with private childcare providers with 4K. And so the compromise was, let's offer both a community-based program, which is, is prevalent around the state of Wisconsin, and an in-house program so that parents have a choice either way. And that's what we've been doing all the way through. As far as specialists go, and special education services, yes, we have verified with principals that we will have the that we will have the space needed to offer the programs for our kids at the buildings. About Holton Elementary, there was a question, why is Holton the district's highest performing, most cost-efficient school with stable growing enrollment being considered for closure? Holton is, is a very high-performing building. Some years it's the highest performing, some years it's not the highest performing. It really, we don't close buildings based on highest or lowest performing. For example, North Hudson is the highest performing school based on the forward exams that were just taken in April related to math achievement and Holton is the highest reading achievement at the elementary. So they bounce around between our elementaries because they're all very high performing and they do a great job as we, as we look at it. As far as stable or growing enrollment, the Holton enrollment has been reasonably stable over the last twenty-five years. I think we had one constituent point out, however, the town of St. Joe has added eight hundred new houses in that same time period and we haven't seen enrollment growth. So maybe not quite eight hundred. I think the St. Croix County Economic Development Study might be more like seven hundred houses in that same time period and our enrollment has been basically flat through that same time period. You know, if, it will continue to, you know, we're looking at all of the buildings, but we're also looking at the buildings by geographic location and a variety of things. The board can talk to you about their reasons for closing one or two and, and as they work through it. Instead of closing it, have you considered what makes Holton so successful and how you replicate it as a model across the district? It's not clear what is meant by replicating the Holton model across the district. We provide the same curriculum, the same class size guidelines across the entire elementary, all the elementary schools. You know, we do know that Holton is a very homogeneous school, meaning our student population is, is, is very similar. And, and we also know that it's one of our, our schools that has the lowest amount of students that come from poverty, has the lowest amount of students that happen to have special needs. All of those things, you know, play into a role when you're looking at student achievement and it also has some very low class sizes. Our teachers have switched in and out of Holton over the years. We have very good teachers at Holton, we have very good teachers at North Hudson, we have very good teachers at all of the buildings in the district and we're very fortunate to have that. But as far as the academic program that's offered at Holton versus any of the other elementary schools, it's the same program. It is the same training our staff gets, it is the same expectation and it is the same standards. How many families might leave the district or choose private or homeschools if Holton's closed? We have no way of knowing that. Some people have said, well, have you, have you surveyed parents? It's, it's really hard. I don't even, I don't know what that survey would look like and I don't know how we would get a legitimate response if we said, would you leave the district if we closed Holton? And if we keep it open, would you stay? I would think, you know, some people might say, yes, I'm, I'm going to leave if I tell you that. Would that keep the building open? It doesn't necessarily give us good actionable data as, as you do that. It's just, it's not, there may be families that may choose homeschool, there may be families that choose to open it all out, there may be families that, you know, choose different, different options and every family has to make the decision that's right for their, for their kids in their process. How will the board ensure that community feedback is generally considered not just an exercise in ticking a box? I think as you can see, all of the feedback, we've been putting things on the website, we've been trying to have the meetings in public and I know the board has been responding to emails, reading the emails as we've been going through those things and they can talk to it further as to how they take the feedback in their decision-making process. And then the last question, I've talked about this quite a bit, but why haven't detailed plans for redistricting, transportation and staff been developed before asking the community for input on school closure decision itself? Because we have to know what the parameters are in order to build those, to build those decisions. There are certain things you can do with generalities, but when it comes to transportation, we have to know what attendance boundary a house is in before we can decide which, which bus they get on because which building it goes. And so some of those decisions have to be made first before we can work through that process. So I think that is the bulk of the questions that came up. There were additional questions that I went through on, on the August 25th meeting along with the slide deck that, that has more of the stuff written down. You can also find a lot of the answers to these questions on our website in the document, like I said, that Tracy helped put together as you work through it. Some people will say, you know, my question might not have been on there. We, we tried to, we tried to pull the questions together under general themes, you know, so it wasn't the same question, just a little bit of a spin on all of them, but we tried, we've tried to answer those questions.
Good job.
Thanks.
Yes, Kate.
One thing that I want to address too, that I've heard come up a lot is, and Nick can't really address this, but why is Nick leading the meetings and why is Nick answering the questions? And I want to ensure people who are watching or people here in the audience, I think as a board and everybody can speak to it, we rely on Nick because he, this is his field of expertise. We all come from different backgrounds. I'm a social worker, for example. I don't, I've not worked in a school or worked in administration. So I do rely on Nick to provide information to me. Does that mean that Nick makes the decision on this? Absolutely not. Nick has seven bosses sitting here, which I don't envy because we all have different questions that we bring to him every single day, all day. Nick had, I mean, generally has all the answers to those questions, but the decisions that are made are solely placed on the board's shoulders. So I just want to make that clear. I don't know if anybody else wants to provide any information on that, but that is something that I have heard kind of come up on repeat.
Molly, why don't you?
I know, I just make an electrical sound and then I get to speak. I'm sorry. I want to agree with or echo what Kate is saying is, you know, we as a board are an interesting bunch. We all come from, like Kate was saying, we come from different backgrounds. We have some really smart mathy people and then some really smart, you know, more feelings people and the whole, the whole group. But Nick works tirelessly. Nick, you should close your ears. Nobody is a perfect person. None of us are perfect. We all have things where we have blind spots. We have things that I'm, things I'm good at, things I'm not good at. Same for anybody else, but Nick takes calls on vacations. He works on vacations and I tell him, don't do that. Vacations are important. So when people kind of get down on Nick, I have to say that really bothers me. Teachers, people in the audience, everybody deserves their time with their families and we need to respect that. Any decisions we make are decisions we're making as a board. When we ask for information or things come up or people have questions, same as Kate said, Nick provides it for us. Bonnie provides it for us. Tracy does. Anybody else in the cabinet provides it for us. So I think we want to make that really clear.
I, I would say that, yeah, I mean, please remember that it is the board's decision. Nick has taken some shots and we all have. There, Nick did not come here ten years ago, eleven years ago with an agenda. I did not run for school board to represent my community because I had an agenda. All of us up here have either have kids in the district or had kids in the district and have been at the same, same concerns as a parent as you all. And we've all had, you know, great experiences with the district and some challenges as well. And just take that into consideration, I, I think, and, and you know, you know, we've got, we get a lot of emails and many are very, very understanding of the, first understanding of, I hear a lot of the financial concerns. But then it goes in, in another more emotional, very personal way and just know that, we understand that. We absolutely understand it because we had our children in the schools and we love the schools our children were in. So we're not some alien force up here trying to ruin the district. So I can't say it any plainer. Erin?
It's a pretty good segue, I suppose. I agree with what everyone is saying up here and, and I have, you know, make, listened to a lot of comments about Nick and I'm not going to pat his back too much because I think, you know, he's heard enough of that already. But he does do a good job and we do take all that information and as with all the information that we've been receiving from community members, we are hearing you. I just want you to know, we have all been reading, I'm pretty sure everyone up here has read every single email. I would actually vouch for that. Maybe not the like twenty that came in today because, you know, we still have our, our regular jobs and our families. It's a lot of information that the community is throwing at us on top of reading through everything from the community meeting, all the feedback, all the comments. When I printed it off, it was like thirty-two pages and I read every single word from that. And the recap from Tracy, Tracy, you're amazing with this stuff. Thank you so much for all of your work and thank you for putting this and sharing it with the public. I just want to make a couple points and I know as I walked around at the community meeting, it was valued and so I just want to have it here as well. There are four of us board members sitting up here that have been through the boundary lines changing and being forced to move schools. Maria and I were both part of the boundary line change six years ago, almost seven years ago and it was hard. It was really hard. And Megan and Brian are sitting up here with kids that go to both Holton and Willow. So I just want you to know that really there's four people and, and the other board members have been through this and watched how it unfolds. I really don't think you could have a better group up here to make this kind of a decision based on our own backgrounds, some emotional, some creative, some very social, some nerdy. But we're hearing all of this and, and it is hard to read all of the emotions in the emails and stuff and, and push that aside and look at the hard numbers and where we're actually at. The other things I just wanted to add here is, it is very normal and I had a really hard time with this and I wish I would have known this when the boundary lines were done how many years ago and I was one of those families and very upset, very upset. I did not know at the time that boundary lines, it is normal for them to change every eight to ten years. It's a real stat and that goes based on housing, apartments, kids moving in and out. They're not super stable homes. There's no prediction who's going to move into there. New housing developments come up and you have to redistrict. That's how your districts continue to thrive. So that is very normal. And the other thing that is very normal just in society is that buildings do age and they get torn down or sold or repurposed or rebuilt. You know, we hear, heard a lot from people about, oh, what are you going to do in ten years if there's a big boom? Well, I can't tell you how many people from Minnesota are going to move over here, you guys. Probably half of you are from Minnesota already. Tell your friends to move over so we can have more kids in the district, I guess. I mean, there's just no way to know. You can't predict how many kids are people going to have. We are all faced with the information that's in front of us. Some of us are very fresh to this board and, you know, we all have the same information here. None of us were here that I know of when Rivercrest was built, we didn't make those decisions. Again, these are all things that have been impacting the district along with looking at that, I mean, everyone keeps bringing up the budget problem at the state level. It's a fifteen-year-old problem, you guys, and we're still dealing with it. It's not, the numbers are not going to get any better. I hate to be the person that says that. I don't see it getting any better and we have to make decisions to do what's best for these kids even when that's hard. So I just wanted to, to say, that's just what I was thinking.
Thank you, Erin. Good words from everyone. I don't know if that blew kind of, if you want to start, start it off with Maria. As far as an opening statement from each board member, kind of, do you want to say what? What's, excuse me?
Go ahead, sorry.
You know, so the idea, the idea is here is, you know, what are we hearing from the community, Erin? Already we've all kind of, some of us have kind of gone through that, but also what key factors are weighing in on board discussions and questions, options. So Maria, if you'd like to go first?
Sure, thank you. Kind of building on a lot of the things that are, that have been said, agree with everything. Things that I am considering and as I, as we walk through this, I am considering the enrollment and what's happening and what will happen. I'm considering the budget and what we have and what things will look like in the near term to long term. I'm looking at data on, on housing and potential developments. I'm taking into consideration, as Erin alluded to, you know, my family had, we were reboundreed middle of our two, our boys' elementary years. They were in second and third grade at Rivercrest and then third and fourth grade started at Hudson Prairie. My, I'll just say from a personal perspective on that, you know, while it may have been hard when we first heard about it, I will say, it turned out really beautifully. It did. The boys were able to, along with all of their neighborhood friends who were reboundreed, they had a welcome night just for them at the school. And some of you heard me speak to this before, when they walked through the door, the staff had never met them before and were welcoming them by their first name and last name. They knew them on sight, having never met them before. That's a big deal in all of the kids and within minutes, that was their home. They felt connected. And the thing I will never forget, Matthew, his first words as we were walking down the hallway was, Mom, they have lockers and not cobbies. And it was that moment, I was like, yep, he's, this is it, he's in. So, and we've had good experiences, as hard as it was to say, oh, these teachers we were hoping they would connect with and they got to connect with new teachers and their friend group expanded and they're both in high school now and they have friends from Rivercrest, they have friends from Hudson Prairie and they have their friends from middle school and it, it does, it, it can be okay. It can be a really good growth experience and kids are resilient. Those are things that are kind of running through my mind.
Okay, how about Molly? I'm going to throw her in.
Thanks, Bob. So I guess I didn't know that we were going to be speaking for two minutes, so I blame you, but I am happy to speak. Yeah, I got this.
It doesn't have to be two minutes.
Yeah. As I look out here, I'm sure a lot of you have emailed me and I have tried to email back every single person. I was trying to count it up today. I've talked to some people three times, emailed back. They've asked for more information, I've emailed them. So about eighty emails so far, not today. Today was really difficult to get to stuff. But number one, it is not easy, as I'm sure you know, to kind of have that coming at you like, what's going on? It's really distressing and, you know, people are upset. That's not easy. The way I tend to look at things is, and this is me and I'm not going to put this on anybody else, is that I feel like we can look at something as horrible and terrible or we can look at it as, yes, this is hard, we have an opportunity to. So what I have gained is I have someone who said she liked to buy me bouquet of flowers and go to coffee. I've met with people, I've talked to people in person, on the phone. I feel like everybody has been super kind and respectful and I feel like my job is to be really, really honest, even when it's hard. I, a couple of years ago when we were on the board, I think there's a weird thing about maybe people who run for the board is, you don't want to be disliked. You don't want to have, well, I'll speak for myself. I don't, I don't want people to be mad at me, you know? No, that's icky. It's gross and I know that sounds awful, but I kind of said, you know what? I am not going to lie. I'm going to speak the truth and what I see and we'll just have to work through stuff. So that's kind of just a little bit about what I think about things. I was able to go through all the elementary schools with Erin and Dr. Olet this past Friday. I had been in a lot of the schools before, but maybe not to the extent and it was fantastic. All of our schools are great. They're all super different. Kids are excited, they're engaged, teachers are happy. We were able to kind of have, meet up with teachers that our kids have had and I saw teachers that have retired that are subbing. This is a great school district. I know that people love Holton, they love Willow River, people love North Hudson, E.P. Rock, Hudson Prairie and Rivercrest also. They love their schools. So basically my take on it is, we're all neighbors, whether we live next to each other or not, we're one community and we have to get through this together. Whatever decision that the board makes, we will get through this and let's try to remember that we're going to be neighbors tomorrow, even if you don't like a decision that we make.
Thank you, Molly. Megan?
It's okay, Molly.
It's okay, Molly. We, we know you can't help it. I, I really appreciate everything everybody's said so far. I think, you know, when I ran for the board three years ago, I was sitting where you are now when there was a discussion about to have a vote to close schools and I, I didn't believe the numbers. I thought, we're going to grow like Stillwater. I'm sure you all who were on the board at the time were like, oh, my gosh, why is this Megan Rosowski always emailing us and now she's going to run for the board? This will be fun. But I was, you know, knocking doors to try and get people to vote yes on the operational and the capital campaign. I met many of the people who are in the audience here today and, and other folks who have been really active in the Vote Yes campaign that passed this year by six votes. I have kids at Willow and Holton and I have looked at these numbers every which way and I don't see how we are going to get through this without closing schools. I, maybe I'm going too far into my takeaway, but like, this is what happens when a state legislature does not keep up with educational costs for 15 years. This is what happens when we don't fund special education well. You know, last year I think it was nine and a half million transferred from our general fund to special ed because it's not funded. So we have these components, you know, like I'm a feelings person and then it gets to a point where it's like, okay, I need to look at the numbers and like be real about what's happening here. And we have fewer kids and the amount of money we get per kid has, just keeps going down relative to our costs. That's the bulk of our money and special education funding has not kept up. If any of those parameters were different, we would be in a different place, but all of them are in a bad place in terms of our budget. And this is not what I would wish, where I would wish for us to be, but I also feel like I need to be real. I have to be realistic because I know, I feel like my job on this board is to do what is right for all the students. When I ran for the school board, someone sent me an email and said, if later on, schools have to close and because of the budget issue and enrollment, are you going to be a board member who thinks about all students in our district or are you just going to think about what you want for your kid? And are you going to lead with integrity in a way that helps our district get through something difficult or are you going to make it about what you want? And I thought that was a great email and I was like, yeah, you're right. I, you gotta, you gotta look at the numbers and do the right thing, whether or not I want to do this in my heart, right? And so I'm thinking about all students, I'm thinking about all of our teachers. I know this is particularly hard for our teachers at Willow and Holton and our staff there. And it's also, you know, going to be hard for our other elementary schools. It's going to be, this is going to be hard and it is happening all over the state. And we are not alone. And in terms of who's dealing with this, but I want to remember that we are together, that we are, this is a room full of good people who care about their kids and care about their schools and everyone whose kids are here, I am amazed at how well behaved every child is, so bravo. I'll end there.
Thank you, Megan. Erin, you spoke earlier on a, on a number of topics, but I don't know if you want this or what I'd like to hear from you maybe is continue on with Molly, what you're doing out in the schools?
Yep.
Because you had a lot of nice things to say about that.
I would agree with that. I think Molly and I could just sit up here and have a whole discussion on what we observed at the schools and that was a very valuable tour. I had not been through some of the buildings. I have been through most of them because I've had kids at several schools here, but I just had a couple takeaways and I kind of had chicken scratch because I was not prepared to do this, Maria, thank you. So all of us are kind of on the fly, but that's, that's all right. I was, I was prepared to talk about this part. So I just, a couple highlights as we are walking through, I'll start with Rivercrest and I'll just go down my list here. Rivercrest is, I mean, it's fantastic. It's one of the newer schools. I think 2008 is what's marked on the actual building. I had a daughter, I had two daughters at Rivercrest. We got to visit with Mrs. Barch in third grade who has 27 kids in her class and Molly and I were invited with Paula, the principal there, to stay when they came in from recess on a popcorn Friday, which, so there'd be a lot of extra distractions. And I know I'm, and I still advocate for smaller class sizes. It was really impressive to see her navigate through 27 students that all came in. She says, you have to see this, you've got to stay. So we did and every single student, and there are some challenging, she has about 10 challenging students, she said in that class, that need a little extra special help and it was really, it was really cool to see that. You can interrupt me.
No, I don't want to interrupt you, but I just wanted. She's, I think she said that she has three with IEPs and
It was like 10.
Seven with language learners.
10 with like special.
Yeah, so she has some, some kids. She's not alone in her classroom.
No, and she's not alone in her classroom. And I'm not saying like 27 is a good number. I don't misconstrue that. It was just, it was phenomenal to see they've only been in school for a couple of weeks and what a grip she has on her classroom and how well the kids were just doing, following directions, thriving. It was really fantastic anyhow. What a gift to have Camp St. Croix directly across the street and have that pathway underneath so kids can go outside and get some extra community involved in it. Holton Elementary, you pull up to that school and it's like you see the little red barn out there and I just feel like it's like the little red schoolhouse. It's very charming and the oak tree out front has some serious history to it. It's like you can just feel it seething through the whole community there. I really enjoyed going through that school and I can definitely see why people love it so much. Personally, I would seek out a smaller school like that because it just is, it's pretty awesome, you know? All things, the flagpole though, Nick, we need to do something about that flagpole. It's a little wobbly. I think it's, I think it's an amazing school and it's, it's a great community. Prairie Elementary, it's great. My daughter went to Prairie. That was our switch from Rivercrest to the bound, with the boundaries to Prairie and very upset. I said that a couple of times, but I, I can't even stress that enough. As a parent, I was way more upset than my kid was and it was my job to make it okay. And I know that it might seem a little candid that I'm sitting up here saying this to parents that are listening going, oh, yeah, right, you have no idea. Trust me, I do. I thought about leaving the district. I thought about all the options that were available to me and I think everybody has the right to do that. And people are going to make choices. It's going to be hard for their families. When we got to Hudson Prairie, my daughter had friends with her. She did great. I so didn't want to think she was going to do great if it makes anyone feel any better, even a little bit, but she did amazing. They had, like Maria said, it was set up so nice and they did a good job. So I can't stress that part enough. So it was nice to, to be in that building again. EP Rock, I had a beef with the letters, you already heard about that. But on a side note, all the buildings there particularly have such a great space now for the teachers and the staff to take their time. And I just feel like in the, in the upgrades that we did to the building, the staff really made out good and I feel, I feel really good that our teachers got a big perk with that. It also appeared walking through them that all the schools have enough room if we were to close one or two and we did have a lot of discussion with principals about that. Molly, feel free to interrupt anytime. And, and it just, it was good to see the amount of kids that were in the classrooms. And so we did periodically like, how many kids are in your classroom? What do you think about the numbers? We got to talk to several teachers and of course, they all had that sweet spot of their numbers and they were within the guides that we just gave and I think that that's amazing. What else? Am I missing something else about this? Willow was great. I mean, it's like there's a solarium in there or something. It's, it's pretty, it's got 14 floors. I don't know if anybody knew that, but I did not. I, I mean, I've been through there. I've just not been on all 14 floors before. I have now. And North Hudson was great too.
Okay, do you remember what Mr. Reckinger was talking about? The timeline?
No. Oh, oh, duh.
Aztec, Incas, Mayans?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, share that.
Yeah, they shared us.
You remembered it clearly better than I did.
I mean, gosh, you can't ask for a better teacher than Mr. Reckinger and those kids in the classroom who shared what they were working on, the Aztecs, Incas and Mayans and there are some nice kids in this school district, very, what's the word? They're so self-contained, like, hmm, okay, I'm going to share this with this adult.
Confident.
Confident, yeah, really great kids.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then just to finish up, North Hudson had some really great upgrades too to it and I mean, just the spaces look a lot better and as much as I was not one of the people, it's public information, I did not go for the referendum for a lot of reasons, but I'm really glad to see that that money is used in a good way in, for most of it, to really brighten up the spaces and give the teachers what I think is a fantastic work environment and for the kids. So that was kind of my take on the whole thing and then, you know, we did look at, you know, the things that would need to be upgraded at Willow and at Holton and, you know, so that's kind of where I'm at, looking at those numbers.
Thank you, Erin. I'm Brian.
Thanks, Erin. That was, that was great. I actually, I, I personally have stories with that oak tree and the flagpole at Holton Elementary, so maybe when we're
Later?
Not, I can't, yeah, yeah. So as I've been thinking about this and I didn't get a heads up either, thanks, Maria.
You know, we could have denied it just
First kind of thinking about, you know, why we're here, why we're having this discussion. We're, we're, we, we have an excellent, excellent school district. Everybody here has talked so far about going through the individual schools and it, and it continues in the middle school and the high school. Certainly, middle school and high school are a different experience than, than elementary school, but they're still a great experience. And, and the reason I'm talking about that is, is I moved here, I grew up here, but moved away for a long time and I moved here from a, from a school district, Minneapolis, that was not, the, the school board there struggled to make decisions over time. Over a period of really 50 years, they've been shrinking and they, I think you would say they'd, they'd entered a death spiral. When my, when my daughter was in kindergarten there, that's her only year, 2020, the pandemic year, she had 35 kids in her kindergarten class. I was just looking at our averages across our elementary schools, they have 18 to 20 across our elementary schools. We really, we have something special here and, and we need to preserve that and, and that's really why we're here and it, it, so it's class sizes, it's also devoting our resources to what, what matters for our student outcomes. That's, that's almost 100% paying our teachers and staff and making sure we can recruit them, we can retain them. We've got to have money to do that. I was looking at our budget cut scenarios from January and we looked at, one of the options was let's forego a year of increases for teachers. Right there, just, just increases in one year, two to 3% is something like $1.7 million. Those costs keep growing. So, so that's sort of the, the frame I've been thinking about that, about all this. And then I've been thinking about what do we, what do we know with certainty and then what, what's really our risks kind of in, in each direction as we're thinking about this and, and what do we know? We know things like state aid. We know our current enrollment. We know, you know, we know, you know, on the feeling side, Molly. We know that Holton and Willow, the two schools we're talking about here, they have, they've got a history, they've got a culture and, and those are things we can't put a price tag on. It, it, it's impossible, but we also have to balance our budgets and, and that's something that, that is really challenging. We also know that taxpayers in this, this community expect excellence from the school district, but they also expect efficiency. We talked a lot about that, the referendum, what, was it four tries in operating a referendum? Three? The third one, $5 million lasting only for six years. We all talk a lot about it. It passed by six votes. I've heard from emailers saying, I reluctantly passed it. You know, people think hard about that. That speaks to the expectations they have for our community. So those are the, the pieces we know. And then what's, what are the pieces we, we don't know? Enrollment in the future, state aid in the future. Megan talked a little bit about it with, with state aid. We've really, state, state governments have run surpluses really since the Great Recession ended, 2012, 2013. They were small at first and then since 2021, they were absolutely enormous. And in that time, we've seen declining state aid in this school district relative to the cost of providing education. So I, I feel pessimistic about that for lots of reasons going forward. And then the last piece, enrollment, what's it going to look like in the future? Right now, the best data we have is that enrollment isn't, it, our most recent projections, we projected something like, what was it, 2,000 elementary students this year and right now we're sitting at 1940. Some, we're, our most pessimistic projection, which was bending down, we're sitting 60 kids below that. So the, you know, I'll stop there. That's just sort of, those are my thoughts. That's how I've been thinking about this.
Okay.
Well, I, I would echo what a lot of board members here have been saying. As I've thought about it over the last year, couple of years, but more, more, more so in the last month, the feedback that I'm getting from the community boils down to two things essentially. And one is feelings, emotions, how that's going to affect their family and their kids and finances. So feelings and finances, both completely opposite things. So I've heard from people saying, you know, how much this will impact their families and that is certainly not lost on me. It's sad. I found myself, you know, in a parking lot just thinking about it or waking up, thinking about it. So I know that each and every one of us is really, this is on our minds most of the Willow River opened in 1912. I looked up today. So it's 113 years old. It's a huge part of our history and I love historic homes, I love historic buildings and I love what's going on in that school. Holton is the same. People have all these memories of Holton and maybe going to the flagpole when it was too cold one day and, never mind.
It wasn't me, but it was, he's a dad at Holton today.
We won't name any names.
I won't name him.
Okay. You know, obviously class, the small class sizes is, is successful. So I mean, there's things that I'm hearing from people that are certainly legitimate and, and then I hear when I go to different parts of the community, like, gosh, I just got our tax bill and it's, it's almost doubled. I can't believe that this is happening. They have high expectations, like Brian said, of, of how we're spending taxpayer dollars. And a huge part of our job is to be a good steward of those tax, those funds that are provided to us. We graduated a class of about 430 in 2025 and we have, it sounds like a final count of 287 kindergarteners coming in. So the numbers don't lie. So these are the things that are going through my head at all times and we are, we're getting your emails, we're lis, we're reading them, we're responding as we're able. Usually if they go, just so everyone's aware, if they go to the entire board, then the board president or if Nick's included, then he responds. If you send them to us separately, we'll respond to you as well. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. I haven't responded to any emails in about a week, so sorry, anybody. I was at a Policy and Resolutions Committee meeting in Madison Friday and Saturday and interestingly enough, because we get asked about, what are you doing enough with, with our legislators and to lobbying for these, these problems in Madison, you know, this unsustainable funding? And we did go down as a group and, and talk about that. And we did go down as a group and, and talk about that. And because of who we talked to down there, unfortunately, I was recommended to be on a panel coming up in November to discuss about all the success Hudson has had, getting their legislators to listen to them. So while it's kind of a little ironic, we've been trying to fight that battle, and Shan Zimmerman's been great, but it's been a struggle with some of our other legislators. And, but, so a lot of people in a lot of schools are having a lot of the same concerns in being criticized or held accountable, you know, in the same way. What keeps me up at night with this is, again, none of, none of us, me especially, moved to Hudson in ridiculous growth, and I was, my family was part of that, and never thought we'd be having a conversation about potentially closing schools. The, why I am on the board is to keep quality educational opportunities for all of our kids. And I see, just remind people that, yes, I mean, we have great elementary programs in schools, we do. We have amazing things happening in our high school and middle school as well. And you, most people in this room will be having their kids in there in a number of years. And, you know, when I, it hurts me when I hear criticisms about, you know, how fancy that middle school is, or we didn't need to build that high school that big. Well, you know, visit other high schools, and you'll see some extravagance. Hudson is a, at high school, your kids will enjoy it, and they'll be very happy for the opportunity to be there. But, but more than the building itself is, is the, the curriculum, the programming that we can provide, the, the quality teachers and staff that we can afford to pay within our budget. I've also been around long enough to see teachers leave for other districts because the pay was better. They could make two grand more a year, four grand more a year, and that was heartbreaking to see quality staff leave. And so this isn't the first struggle that, you know, financial and budgetary struggles that this district has been in. And I fully believe we will survive, but some of those non-negotiables are, we need to pay our staff and our teachers. It needs to be competitive, we need to keep the programming at a level that our parents enjoy and have and expect. So, you know, with that, you know, that, I will be, I'm probably a little more blunt, I'm not a very touchy-feely person in general, but this is emotional for me as well. And, and, you know, we're trying to do the best we can up here, but we have some numbers that no matter who is sitting up here, would, would be confronted with the same realities. And I, I've said that before, I, I don't know if people, you know, understand it or not, because it is a very high emotional time. To mirror what everybody else here has said is, you know, we have wonderful schools, we need to keep, we need to keep the, what's important at schools. Jamie Johnson, our board president of 12 years, had said three years ago, I'm not going to vote for brick and mortar over teachers and, and students. And that's kind of where I am, I am too, that if there are realities, and, and we've talked around in circles about what cuts could be made, what cuts have been made, the unsustainable funding and the declining enrollment, those two things limit our flexibility to a point where we can only look at these, these, these big items and, and big inefficiencies. And, you know, to say, I'm not saying that Holton is, is a bad, or is an inefficiency, I'm not saying that Willow is, is an inefficiency, but we have to look at the costs to keep them and our 63% capacity. That, that is the most glaring thing that sticks out with ways we can solve some of these problems without affecting our curriculum, our programming, and, and without losing teachers and staff. So Maria, I don't know if you want to move on to the next, or you, Nina?
Whatever.
I mean, if you wanted to call up a topic and?
Sure, so I'll, I'll propose a few. So I'm just kind of listening to the conversation, reflecting on, I, I think there's four main buckets that I, and others throw in, I'm curious to hear others on, is, feels like budget and funding is a big one, enrollment, population, housing, kind of, we've all been reflecting on that, feels like staff, staffing, and then families and communities. But I don't know how others feel, if those are kind of the main topics that resonate for you guys.
Maria, I'd also throw out there, just the, how to say this, the curriculum and the extracurricular opportunities at the middle school and the high school.
Programming?
Programming, yes, thank you, that's a better word. Because I think when you start to make cuts, it's, if, if we don't make cuts at the elementary level at 63% capacity, where are the cuts going to be? And part of it is, I, I have great concerns about doing anything that would impact what's happening at the middle school, where we're seeing test scores go up. I don't know if everyone here remembers being in middle school, but that was real hard, right? We're doing great work at the middle school, and the career and post-secondary preparation that we're doing at the high school. So just, I don't want to lose sight of all, how that balance and how the kids are going to end up there eventually, like Bob said.
Erin, let's see, she has a question.
I guess, can, can I understand what we're, I mean, do we have how many topics that you're wanting to go through, Maria? Like, I mean, can I just have a little bit more of what you're thinking here, so I can be prepared when the microphone comes around to me?
Absolutely. So my thought was, there's main topics that we're all kind of wrestling with, and trying to identify them so that we can talk about them and share our thoughts, so that people can hear, and, or maybe there's a specific question that you received. And again, it's just to help guide the conversation, because I know when I think about it, my mind bounces in like five different directions, just listening to the conversation, the open mind. And I, the community live streaming here today that has emailed us, that are here, I think we all agree, that the community hearing us talk about this, this is really the first time we've done that. That's all I'm proposing, is just being able to present that. So hearing these opening, what I did is I just identified, here's the themes I heard from this that people were thinking about across your comments and across what I said. Proposing, you know, budget and funding as a topic we talk about, enrollment, population, housing, kind of all of that together. Staff, families, communities, and programming. Doesn't have to be that, but that's just an opening straw man, if you will, to kind of help give us a framework for talking about this, really hard topic.
So I'm looking at, I'm thinking a good topic might be, just, just one, just a, is, and that's boundary, boundary changes in transportation. I've heard a lot about that, as you all have. And I don't know if Nick, you can pull the boundary map up, or Tim? Because I'm, I'm hearing in the community a lot that, well, you know, Holton is centrally located, it's perfect for, you know, that area being the northern outpost of our school district. And I want to look at, you know, the biggest challenge in our, in our, in our footprint kind of is the Willow River, kind of rolling through it, because we don't have a whole lot of bridges going across that. But, you know, when you look at our boundary map, and I don't have a pointer either, but we have people, Megan, for example, on the far northeast of our, of the, of the boundaries for North, for Holton. And, and I heard some people at the, at the meeting the other night say, well, you know, we go to, we go to Holton and our kid's on the bus for 55 minutes. And just kind of looking at that and looking at where they live, and, and they have to travel all the way west until the farthest reach of our district where the, where the river, the St. Croix curves to the west, to basically the shores of the river. And when you look at the boundaries, those people from Burkhart, they'd be closer if they went to Prairie, if they were bused to Prairie. That's just real. So when people say, and this is, I'm going to hit the other schools too, so I think I'm just hitting on Holton, we've said, well, that's the most stable enrollment. True, but that, that boundary hasn't changed forever, and those long bus trips are as a result of needing to bring people from that far east to come out, to, to Holton. And you look at, and you look at where Willow River is. You have people from the Hudson Town Hall area, they are bussed in, within two blocks of Prairie, past Prairie, along the railroad tracks, get down to Willow River. The reason is to keep Willow River's capacity where it is. So those Willow River people on that west or east side could go to Prairie, those Holton people on that far northwest side could go to, to Prairie. The Holton people would have, that are closer to Holton School, if we closed it, would go to North Hudson, and they would have a little longer bus trip. But it, it wouldn't be as an extreme. And more people south of 94 would fill into River Crest. Some people of the far, far east, south of 94, would go to Prairie still. And some people from Willow downtown would go up to EP Rock. So you could look at it from, from a transportation, this is one way to simplify things and could even make those bus trips shorter, potentially with the same amount of, of, what do you call them? Routes, routes, excuse me. And even if, even if we did have to spend $70,000 to $140,000 a year to add a couple routes to even make it even better, it would be much more offset by the cost of keeping Willow and Holton open. So is that a good way to spend more money on busing, to make trips shorter? I will put that out to the group and see if anybody has any comments, or, or related to the boundary adjustments? Because those are always fun.
Yeah. Well, I, Mr. President, I do think that if we have some wiggle room in there to get more routes and to ensure that kids are not on the bus that long, that is pretty hard, I think, for kids to be on that, little ones to be on the, on the bus that long. I would support that.
Kate?
Mr. President, I, I come at this at a little different angle about the buses, and people can say what they will, but I always was a working mom, and at the end, I think my kids had the longest bus ride because we lived on the border of where they went to elementary. And I think they were picked up earlier, so in the morning, they had a little shorter bu- bus ride, and then in the afternoon, they had the longer bus ride. It was about 50 minutes. And I'm going to be totally honest, as a working mom, it gave me extra time to work. And say what you will, it was something that I needed at that time, and so then I didn't have to put them in after-school care, and it worked for our family. I have never heard my kids comment about having a long bus ride, or I think they actually enjoyed extra time with their friends. So there's different perspectives, probably pros and cons to both, but that's just my thought.
Mr. President?
Maria.
I can see both. I've, I've been in that situation when, we live out in the town of Hudson, our, when our kids are in elementary, yeah, man, that, that morning time and that bus ride to pick up and after-school was invaluable for me. Too, as a working mom, I totally get that perspective. And I get, you know, as my kids got older, it was less their favorite thing. I, I also respect where other families are at on this, where, yeah, having long bus rides is a concern, and so how do we balance that as a whole? I think that's a great, kind of, for me, it's a, what do I want to call it, like a north star as we, as we navigate this, and when a final decision is made, like, transportation, fighting that balance to really, you know, keep within an hour, but if we can keep it less, that, that's even better, as much as possible for those, for those families.
Mr. President?
Yes, Maria.
I had a really long bus ride as a kid because I lived out in the country outside of River Falls, and then I moved, you know, to the far end of our district and, I don't know, I feel like I'm going to sound like my grandpa right now. But like, it's like, you know, the, things you don't like are part of life, right? You know, and I feel like, like it makes kids resilient and tough to sometimes have to deal with things that aren't exactly how you want them, right? Like, one of my friends would always say, I like Daniel Tiger, but I don't like the unrealistic idea it gives you of transportation, that it just picks you up and takes you right where you want to go. Because it, you know, you have to, you, you got to make it work for the school district. And then like, when I grew up and I lived in cities, and I, I lived in New York for a year, and I was like, well, I'm just going to sit on the subway for like, an hour and a half to go a mile and a half, but that's just what it was. So that's kind of all over the place, but.
Well, thank you for that. I, and one of the reasons I brought that up as a topic was because it's what I'm hearing a lot, and, and, and one of the things is like, if you, if you close these two schools, it's even going to be worse. And, and I don't think it will be. So that was maybe a lost point on that. Erin?
One of the things that I was hearing at the community meeting, particularly from the Willow River parents, was that if, should their school close, that they're going to lose their community and that community feel. And as a parent who drives downtown every single day, drives past all of these, some parents walk, but mainly it's the kids walking by themselves to and from school, it's really nice to see that you can do that. I also see the same thing over at Hudson Prairie, and I also see the same thing at EP Rock in the morning, there are children walking to school, and I think that that's wonderful, it just shows where we live in Hudson. It's kind of pretty unique, honestly, that we can trust to do that with our kids. But I just wanted to point out, probably not going to be popular with Willow people to hear, but I'm going to say it anyhow. Kids kind of weirdly like to ride the bus, and you're not really going to lose your whole community as hard as, again, please remember, you're, this is coming from somebody who had to leave their school, I didn't have a choice. And unfortunately, at the time, the people on the board and the superintendent didn't want my request for open enrollment either, and I didn't have a choice. And so it's not easy for me to sit here and say that, it is an emotional thing, it really stirs a lot up, but your kids will still have their community, they still have their friends that live next door, they're, you're still going to be meeting each other on the corners of the sidewalk, getting ready for the bus route, and parents will still have those connections. I just, it's hard to look at this from everybody's perspective, but from somebody who's been there, thinking that exact same thing, that I'm losing my community, I didn't. And I'm not trying to make that okay, I just, I feel it's something that people are going to have to move through, however it's best for them. They're going to make decisions to stay or to go, whatever ends up being best for their family, because I know Maria has said this many times, one size does not fit all. And there's no possible way all of us up here, the way I'm feeling, can make any decision that's going to please everybody. It's not going to happen, and that is the reality of what we're sitting here with.
Okay, anyone that doesn't have a comment on transportation, I have to pick the next topic, so, Brian?
You can move on, Mr. President.
Kate?
One thing I've heard a lot as a topic, and we can decide, is transparency. Do you want me to go ahead? Okay.
Yep.
One thing I've heard a lot is people want transparency. And so I thought it would be kind of interesting to walk you through how we as a board work, because I've heard, gosh, you must have already had this conversation, or you might have talked about it before, or, and the truth of the matter is that, as a board, we have to have these conversations in board meetings. We can't, it, it's against any open record laws to meet with four of us and say, well, how are you going to vote, or what are you going to do, and come up with a plan before we meet together here. I could certainly call Maria and say, hey, I mean, I had a few questions today, like, how many, how many people are voting in the Hudson School District? So I might ask Maria, or ask Nick separately. But we, we aren't allowed to talk privately about board agendas or meetings or decisions without you hearing what we're talking about. And I will say, this board takes that very, very seriously, and it doesn't happen. You can sometimes You can, sometimes people will say, "I'm going to pull a records request," which are our favorite things in the office. And they pull them because they're looking for something that maybe we talked about or made a decision in an email. It just doesn't happen. The board, I read somewhere where they said the board was making a lot of money, which I wish I was doing this for the money. It's about $100 to $125 a meeting. And that means these meetings. So it doesn't mean meeting with people in the community, talking on the phone, doing computer work. So there is a stipend, but it's pretty minimal. Is there anything else that you have all heard in regards to transparency? Because that's something I've heard a lot in emails and at meetings.
I'm glad you brought it up. It is, I've seen a lot in emails, and I guess I just would echo what you say, like, it is, it's a serious thing of, we can't, as a board, talk outside of these settings. And I walked into tonight genuinely, and the reason why I proposed a framework and caught many of you off guard is because, Erin included, is like, "What are you doing, Maria?" Because I, like, there was no ability for me to come and say, "Hey, like, wait a minute, do we all want to do this? Can't do that." But I did feel strongly, like, willing to propose it, to help provide that transparency and so people can see how we are thinking about each of these really important topics and really important questions. I know when I respond to emails, I try and, like, if I'm going to give you a data source or respond with some information, I have seen a lot of data coming back at questions to us, asking questions about enrollment data, $75,000 at EP Rock, things of that nature. And I don't know where these numbers come from, but I do respond and say, "Here's what I'm looking at," down to the page number, so you can see very clearly, this is the process we're looking at. Because, for me, and I know for the others, and I see many head shaking, that transparency is critical. We look at this data very closely, but we also listen very closely to what you guys are saying.
I would add that, you know, I, we hear a lot, you know, through the emails, I mean, we've gotten a lot of advice, as you can imagine, on how to solve this problem, our funding problem. We have received emails saying, "I know you have to close schools, close Willow." Or, "I know you have to close schools, close Willow and, you know, River Crest and keep Holton open." Or, and it's like, okay, I said I was going to be blunt, you know, we're not going to close a school that has, that is, you know, 15 years old or 17 years old, you know, costs us $12 million, has no maintenance needs at this time, and is south, the only school south of 94. I mean, it's like, I don't even know how to address, you know, advice like that. But, and, you know, as you've got a lot of that talk about, well, you know, the board has got this idea in the back of their head, and it's predetermined. We have, you know, three board members that are a year, a year and a half here. Two board members that are four years on the board. I'm the oldest at seven. I was around for the Facilities Task Force. Brian was a member, back before I knew who Brian was. But, and I've talked to a couple of those Task Force members recently. And that was, what, three, four years ago? And the response I got from both of them was, "Oh, numbers haven't changed. What are you guys still waiting for?" You know, and those were community members that saw this problem, and we had the luxury of waiting. And I think the question of, "This is just too rushed, you can wait." We're looking at a deficit within two years. And we're also looking at, if we keep schools open, if we do anything other than address this now, we're pushing the window. There's not a lot of time. We don't have the luxury we had four years ago. And I can't say it any plainer than that. So, I mean, it's, you know, where I am in on that is, you know, we can't go, we can't stick a future board with a known funding shortfall in five to six years where we're coming back for another referendum, and then say, "Oh, by the way, you were so happy with our referendums in general, not only this one, but another one." Because it is absolutely impossible to move forward. And maybe their next topic should be the community's reach or want for us to entertain foundations and things like that. But I didn't want to move past, have other people can speak on.
I just wanted to say one thing, sort of, related to the seeming like the vote in August came out of nowhere for folks. And I get it, we all only have so much bandwidth, right? So for us on this board, we feel like we've been talking about this for a long time, right? And then it hasn't been imminent. And you all have to work and do your housework and take care of your kid, and like, there's the news of, from international, you know, like, we all only have so much bandwidth to pay attention to board meetings and see what the agendas are. Like, I don't know what's going on at the county. All I heard about was the solar farm. I was like, I don't have bandwidth to even think about that. I don't know what's going on in St. Joe. Like, I read the newsletter that comes twice a year. So I don't blame anybody for not knowing it was being discussed. I get it. But it's also, I know if I go to the county website, I could find out. So like, we weren't trying to hide anything. It's just, it's very hard to get across. Until things are imminent, sometimes they're not going to rise to being on your radar because we all have really full lives that are already probably too full to take care of everything we need to. I don't know, I fall in bed exhausted every single night, and I'm like, there were seven things I didn't get to. And I bet most other working parents do too. So I think that's part of the transparency thing, is it feels like it came out of nowhere for people.
Brian.
Just sort of on that point, three of us, we haven't been here for a year and a half, Bob, just a few months.
Seems like longer.
The three of us, you know, campaigned from January to April last year with three other candidates. And on the ballot at the same time was the referendum. It's, I don't, I can't speak for Maria or Erin, but every time I knocked on a door, they didn't really want to talk to me, they wanted to talk about the referendum. And, you know, I hoped at the time, while the board at the time said, "It's absolutely not to keep schools open, it's no promises." I had hoped at the time that it was, would maybe buy us some time. And one thing that's happened, well, really two things that has happened since then that really made us feel in August that we were running out of time, is one, enrollment. I don't know if you all remember, in April, May, and June, we were tracking that kindergarten number, that it was like, what was it, like, 250? Yep. And then the state legislature, not to keep blaming the state, but the state legislature disappointed us again. The state only does their budgets every two years. And it, they pay for 42% of our special education costs. We pay for the rest of them with property taxes or our general aid from the state. That's not supposed to pay for special education. We morally and legally should provide all those special education services, but we have to find the money for it. And when the state disappointed us again with that information, we felt as a board, you know, it's time to move this up. It's not pulling a fast one on anybody.
Anybody else on that topic?
I was wondering if we could move into kind of a budget-funding-foundation kind of conversation? Because I know there've been a lot of questions around the budget. How do we find, what are we doing with the funding? How do we find new funding? I've heard a lot of that. And I think, to build a little bit on what Brian said, you know, when we campaigned, I made it very clear, this, we have a funding issue that has been growing since the state decoupled state aid from inflation. And that decision was made back in 2009. And I remember at the January, this past January, when we were sitting, I wasn't elected at that point, it was just a community conversation around potential budget reductions, and how would we close this coming gap? And then President Jamie Johnson stood up and said, "The reality is, if funding had kept pace with inflation, we would be sitting with at least $12 million, maybe $15 million more in funding, in our budget alone." But it's not there. And then hopes came up as they talked about, we're going to try, this year's budget at the state, saying, "We're going to try and get 60% of special education funding, we're going to fund it up to that level." And it came in at 42%. And that was extremely disappointing. That would have helped bridge even more gaps. And we, as you said, it's morally and legally right, we have to fully fund our special education. We can't not do that. This idea, it is so much bigger than us, and yet we, as communities and as boards, are forced to reckon with it. The fact that 10 years ago, our funding was 70% from the state and 30% from local tax base, and now today it is the opposite, is not okay. And every single board member here has been advocating for years to just implement the blue ribbon recommendations that were published in 2019, five of them. Any one or two of them would have made a dramatic difference for our budget, and they haven't moved. Nick brought an idea forward to, a password here, about a one-cent sales tax increase for the state, replicating something that has been very successful in Iowa, to generate a pot of money that public schools can use so they don't have to go for capital referendums. That is on a WASB recommendation, policy recommendation, but it doesn't make traction at the state level. We, quite frankly, we are in kind of like death by a thousand cuts for public education, and it's not okay. And boards have been saying it and saying it, and we are faced with this reality. We need more action, and we need that to change. You can change a board level, they're going to face the same questions. It's not, we don't get that decision-making. We just get the pot of money and say, "How do you effectively use it? And by the way, you can't use more than you have." I loved the idea at the, Kate and I were talking at the, we looked at each other when somebody made a foundation suggestion, it was like, it's a tangible idea. And we do have a foundation for our school. It's a separate entity, it's a nonprofit, it's run by volunteers. And like many other foundations for public schools, they focus on scholarships for teachers to get additional training, curriculum support, supplies for the classrooms. And why? Because the money, the pot of money that they have to gift and give year over year is very small. To have a foundation fund us to the tune of $5 to $10 million every year for an operational cost, they would have to have assets of $1 million or more. Not a million, $100 million, excuse me, or more, in hand. That's a really big foundation. And those types of foundations are not funding one thing. They're funding multiple priorities across what they do all the time. And that, so there is, it's not that I don't appreciate the idea and the creativity, because we hear that from the community, you want us to bring creativity. We're also dealing with, I really want to be clear and honest and transparent, they're just our realities of how we can use that money and accept it. We can't house a foundation ourselves, it's a separate thing. And operating money has to be consistent year over year for us to really hire teachers so they know they have a job from one year to the next. I'm going to pause because they keep going on.
Mr. President? Thank you. I completely agree with what you're saying, Maria. At one point in time, I'm on the Hudson Safe Board, which is student alcohol-free events, which if your kids go to Hudson High School, the senior all-night party is sponsored by them. Costs about $50,000 to put this party on every year, and it mostly comes from ticket sales and reaching out to our community. We have a very generous community. We ask them every year. And we have to come up with that $50,000, so that's a reach. We talked to St. Croix Valley Foundation one time about, "Let's start a foundation." We have a lot of people who've been former chairs of the senior all-night party, would love to maybe see this go on forever. And they basically told us the same thing. You're going to need a couple million dollars in order to generate enough growth to fund the party at $50,000 a year. Because you take the, you have your asset, and you're just basically giving away the growth that you have because it's invested. So I just wanted to say, yes, they're great, but yet you have to have such an economy of scale. The other thing that I think we should be talking about that maybe people aren't aware of is the voucher program. And I just met with a former teacher in the school district yesterday, who was delightful. She taught at Willow, and said it was the best school she ever taught at. And she was, had talked to Tracy, and Tracy had helped her out a little bit with the history of vouchers. And they initially started as a way for low-income children to be able to access better educational opportunities. And what we have now is another Milwaukee School District, and the amount of money it costs. So, I mean, I don't know what the budget is of Milwaukee School District, but I'm assuming it's more than $80 million. And I don't know if it was 7% of the education budget goes to vouchers, or if it's 7% of the state budget. So I can't, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. But it's huge. And Bob, you might know, how much money do we send from Hudson to the state for voucher programs for children who are not economically disadvantaged?
It has been about $1.2, $1.3 million. But again, the legislator has now made it almost impossible to see that number. I'm pushing for municipalities actually have the ability to put that as a line item on your tax bill. So I have talked with people in the city about trying to get that enacted. And on that topic, Maria mentioned the 1% sales tax, and Nick's favorite state, Iowa. Iowa didn't have referendums, they didn't have any problems, they were smooth sailing. They, their voucher program and school choice program is, Arizona and Iowa and Texas, it is, Florida, it is becoming a looming disaster. So it is something that we, we know the caps are coming off here. I think, I asked Nick about it, and he said, "Well, income levels in this area are high enough where we're not going to really be punished, punished more than..." But it is, it is, it is a problem. And also, it goes to that perception out there, where our state legislator, legislature, you know, back in 2009, set it up for this unsustainability. And so we, us and all the 400 other districts are going for referendums like crazy. And now they're saying, "We got bills in, you know, going to push forward because we want to limit that ability to go for referendums." Well, they set, they set the ground rules, and now they're trying to prevent districts from reacting under the same game that they set up. That's a whole nother tangent, but... And Nick, was I right about the 1.2?
I'm not 100% sure, you have to talk to Bonnie, but, yeah, I mean, it's very difficult. The way vouchers are funded is they take the money off the top of what would be distributed to public education across the state, and then they make us backfill it with property tax. And so, but it's becoming increasingly more difficult to determine what that number is because it's, it used to be a line item on our aid and levy worksheet, and now it's just, they just took it off. It's just a reduction in aid overall. So it's very, very, very difficult to figure out what that exact number is in our district.
And I mentioned earlier the distaste I would have for, you know, multiple referendums down the road, and why we have to be very efficient and very careful. I'm assuming I'm one of many in the city of Hudson that just got their assessment, and my housing assessed value went up 75%. The city and the municipalities, you know, through their assessments and whatever, this is, this is real. So there are more community concerns pressuring, I know Erin mentioned, you know, people on fixed income, you know, every dollar is important. And to a lot of, you know, families, they can absorb it. I don't know how a lot of people on fixed income can absorb the tax difference from an assessment that large. And a lot of people saying about the turnover in housing, you know, I've got a low, I've got a low interest rate. I'm not going anywhere. And I also wouldn't want, you know, wouldn't want to pay that... And, and I also wouldn't want, you know, wouldn't want to pay that, you know, pay that to move into a different house. I don't know, that's another, please, someone save me. Yes, Erin?
Can we switch gears a little bit?
No.
Is that?
Well, I mean, does someone have any, yeah?
Anything else about foundations?
Yeah.
I did want to just ask the question about foundations, like, somebody brought it up in the community conversation, and I don't think it was a completely off idea. I thought, okay, I mean, this is something we should really look into. I'm not sure that it's going to save the day, but I still think it's a great thing to look at. Like, say, somebody passed away and wanted to provide part of their estate to a school district, or say, an enormous business in the community wanted to fund the schools. Do they have a way to do that? And if so, or maybe they don't, I don't know, but we, couldn't we set something like that up? I think it's something we should look into, at the very least.
I'll just provide a little bit of insight, just because I've, I volunteered with a community foundation for about 10 years now. And what I would say is, I, I love the idea, we certainly can. It's usually a development officer. So foundations who are really successful in growing their asset, they do have paid staff, and they have a paid development officer who goes out, and that is what they do. They work within communities to find people who have, you know, they're, they're in retirement, whatever, whatever stage of life they are, and they want to be able to donate and give back to their community. And they work with them to identify either, sometimes it's like a donor-directed or fund, where the donor says something very specific, and that's more often than not what happens. And more often, when people think of education and giving money to a foundation for education, they, they do it in the form of scholarships. So you will see a lot of community foundations with large scholarship assets that they give out for specific things. For instance, there was a gentleman, you know, in, in Ellsworth, who, when he passed away, he left in his will unbeknownst to his family, $1 million to set up a scholarship fund for kids from Ellsworth High School, right? That is possible, and it does happen. You, there is, there is, Eau Claire has a, has a foundation for their public school, and one of their values is to get another source of operational money for their school district. They grant year over year, like, it's under $100,000 out. So you can do it, it's, it's not going to save the day today, but I think it is something you could talk about, but I don't think that's the board directing. That is an independent entity that has to, like, set it up and think about, what are we going to do? And, and it does require paid staff. You can't grow a foundation and get asset levels to what you need on a volunteer basis. But I, I, I think it's a great idea, and yeah, would support somebody taking that on.
Erin?
This doesn't totally go with that, but in talking about fundraising, just some things that the community has brought up, and definitely emailed us many times on, just the ability to do fundraising, and we just heard about $50,000 for, with SAFE being used for the senior parties. I mean, we, there are fundraising things that are happening in the district to fund many different things. PTOs do a great job fundraising, and that money goes, it's earmarked for special things in the schools. One of the emails was talking about space rentals, like, do you guys, you, you guys should be renting your space. We actually do, I did not know this, guys, but we do rent space to other sports teams and other community events at, at many of the locations, many of the locations. And then, you know, somebody also mentioned, we should sell Raider gear. We do sell Raider gear. There's the Raider store at the Hudson High School, if you didn't know about it. Those things, unfortunately, as somebody who has done a lot of fundraising, fundraising is exhausting. It's, it's very rewarding. It takes a humongous amount of people to do it, and the outcome is generally, it's, that is not going to make up for the shortfall. I just wanted to mention that, I mean, we're talking about foundations, we're talking about this. Even with our best foot forward, we're not going to be able, you're not going to be able to raise year after year $5 million to come up with that shortfall. Somebody wants to generously donate to the school $5 million, that'd be great. I'm not seeing a whole lot of hands. But, I mean, we do, we do hear what people are saying, and as somebody who really likes to get creative and, and dig in, I have looked at all of these options, and, and the foundation thing, I think that was actually a very good overview that Maria just gave on that, and very realistic at the same time. If we can switch gears just a tiny bit, in being that creative solution, I would like to explore a potential option of using Holton as a charter school for Hudson. I don't know how that sits with the community or the families.
We can go around, but I think you were reaching for the mic, Erin?
I just was reaching for the mic to say, can you elaborate on that?
I, I kind of noticed that, I picked up on that. I just, there are 220 some charter schools in the state of Wisconsin that are very successful. They have a different funding model, some still from the school, but there's some grants that are available that I noticed for a lot of them. We have some charter schools that have been around here. Example would be the River Falls Renaissance, and also the River Falls has a Montessori across the river. There's St. Croix Prep, and there are other neighboring districts that have similar things. I don't know what it would look like, and I'm not trying to offer like, hey, yeah, this is the solution. I don't know that, I'm just proposing that I would really like to just look at, what does that look like for funding? Is that look like something that our district, we, we already have the Hudson WVS, the virtual program, that is a charter school through Hudson. Are we, number one, able to put an umbrella over and even talk about turning that into a charter school? Things about charter schools, they would be open to everybody. I don't know if that fits in the Holton community. I don't know that Holton wants people from, let's say, Rivercrest, wants to come all the way to Holton, because, let's hypothetically say it becomes a Montessori. You have to pick a certain niche, basically, that, that is my understanding. I could be completely wrong on this, I've done a lot of research. I just, I think that, and the reason that comes up for me, is we talk about these boundary lines, and we talk about the timeline that was given, and we talk about that, this has been 10 years, we talked about through the boards, different boards, that, you know, Willow would maybe close, and Holton families are definitely feeling that. I'm getting that from the emails and from people that I'm talking to. And I just feel like not making a decision is not going to be satisfactory for any of them, even though, even though people want us to delay making a decision, is not going to improve this situation. This is like, it's all coming to a head, it's all been discussed, but what I haven't heard discussed is, what are the options for another type of school? This would allow us to do a couple of things. One, it would allow us to keep that school in our district. It would allow families more choices. Charter schools are held to a higher proficiency level, and the district can set that if they want. And if they don't make those proficiencies, they end up closing eventually. They have five years to perform, and they're reevaluated, just like the virtual charter board that we have right now. It's reevaluated every five years, and this board decides on, yep, we want to keep this going, or nope, we don't want to keep that going. I'm just, I'm looking at something where Holton families, you know, or Willow families, whatever you want to call it right now, but I'm specifically looking at Holton because it is so remote out there, and the community out there is very unique, as I started off saying. And there's some very cool things about the people that go there. And I just, I think that a creative type of a school would be something worth looking at.
Okay, Megan?
Mr. President, so Erin, when I first joined the board, I thought similar things. Why don't we do some kind of nature-based or nature-stem-based charter school? I think the issue is, we aren't really in a place where we're going to pull in a lot of other students from other districts, right? Like, we aren't in Stillwater, we aren't in the Twin Cities metro, we aren't in a spot where we're going to get big open enrollment numbers. And so if we have a charter school, even if we're able to get some funds to get started that needs a new curriculum, that pulls students from our other schools, I don't think it helps us fix our budget problem at all. Because now we're spending money on a new curriculum and a new way to, do, do you get what I'm saying? Like, I don't think we're going to get enough students. Somerset has 1,600 students, I don't know how many New Richmond has, like, I know Holton feels far away to people, but like, it is like seven minutes from the school to North Hudson. Like, I know people, I, I mean, I live almost out by the game farm, like, really far out there. My closest place, it takes 10 minutes to like get to Burkhart. But like, it, it doesn't take that long to get to town. Like, I, I know, when I moved there, I knew I was moving 15 to 20 minutes away from a grocery store, so it's, I wanted to live in the sticks and have like, you know, my kids run around in the woods, like, like, you know. So, anyway.
And make nettle tea.
And make, yeah, they're really into, to eating edible plants, no. But I just, I don't think it helps us solve our problem. It sounds kind of fun and kind of exciting, but then I think we just have something else that's costing more money, that's costing more time, and I don't even know how that deal with transportation. Do you have to bus the kids? I don't know. And then that would cost a whole bunch of money for busing kids from all over.
I'm kind of looking at it from the standpoint of, this is how we could potentially retain students in the district. When we talk about closing a school, that's, I know you say seven miles out. It does feel like a very long ways out from somebody who doesn't live right there and isn't used to that commute. But what we've heard repetitively is that families are moving in from Minnesota. Hi, Megan, welcome to Wisconsin. And Brian, welcome back to Wisconsin. I mean, and we hear that from people in the community all over the place. They, do we know how many people are going to continue to move here? I don't know, it depends on what Minnesota decides to do. We will get more people if they continue to do what they're doing. Is that a good model? No, for us to predict, you know, enrollment. I'm just saying that there's, we don't have that. And Hudson is very unique. We have a really good thing going with the, with the virtual charter right now. It's continuously growing, it's performing, and I just think that we should maybe take a little bit of a pause and evaluate what that would look like. And in evaluating it, I mean, we should talk to, I mean, the president of WASB, is the board president at River Falls, is he not?
Oh, well, he's the regional president.
Or, or regional, okay. So we have some resources that we could go to and say, hey, how do these schools work under your thing? They have two of them, they're very successful, and the kids love them, and the parents love them as an option. And when you, when you look at just closing that, are people going to keep moving here? If they're going to be in, you know, a larger area down here? I don't, who, who knows? We can't really, I, I feel like, part of what's so hard about all this is, is I'm sitting here as a very realistic person going like, who, who is anybody to predict? How many babies people are going to have? How many people are going to actually move in for what reasons? Like, these are just hard things to, to go, and I'm proposing this as looking at keeping one potentially open for a tech, potentially a limited amount of time. Five years is not that long. But it puts Holton and the community around it in an opportunity to say, we're going to step up, we're going to fundraise, we're going to do the things that we need to do because we want this type of a school in our area. And it just kind of puts a hard stop at it if it fails. And I don't want to see it fail. It's just, it's just another avenue to just look at.
So to get everybody's opinion, I would like to hit Bonnie up because she has a little experience with that, but Maria, if you'd like to speak.
I can just tell you my experience. So in the Ashton School District, we did do, we introduced a charter school. Did I do that? Oh, geez. Just a couple of things. Typically, when you are doing a charter school, you need to have an instructional model. Like, you can't just say, we're going to have another school out there. What's the model? What are you going to do? The other thing is, enrollment is tied to a lottery. So you couldn't say, like, the Holton families get to go to that because they live near there. You'd have a lottery, in district would fill it, and then once that was open, then you could do open enrollment if, if there's spots available. So, you know, depending on how it comes, there are some limitations that even if the Holton family, they might not get into that school. So that would be a thing to think about. The planning grants are typically two- to three-year processes. You work, we worked with CISA, is it 11? I think it's nine. And it's, it's usually the money they give you is not for infrastructure operating costs, it's usually to pay for getting your teachers or your staff up to speed, how to develop their curriculum model. Some of the things that we had issues with was, when kids were in the charter school, and only left the charter school, was the curriculums weren't, I don't want to say, what is it called? Well, like, a first grader in a charter school might learn, you know, adding at this, but then if they transferred out, they wouldn't, and so there was gaps for students. I'm not saying that's for everything, that was something that we experienced. It's, it's a long process. I think it, you can definitely explore it, and it's a process, but I don't think it's something that we say, oh, we're going to do a charter, and you're going to do it next fall. It's probably like a two- to three-year planning of what, what specifically are you looking for, and then you have to get approval from DPI. I know you had asked a question about operating under the umbrella of virtual, I don't, I'm not sure about that, because that was the only virtual or charter school that we had. I'm not sure how you could umbrella, and maybe you could, I'm not sure.
Brian?
My, my, just a quick here. My question with the umbrella was, because there's only like certain amount of schools in the whole state that can actually approve charter schools, right? So there's like six hubs, basically, right now. Four, four of them that are actually approving charter schools, and because we have a charter school, we would be like that umbrella school for that. Am I not understanding that correctly?
My understanding was that all charters have to be approved by DPI. I don't know about the hubs.
They have to be approved by both. So they have to be approved by the school board and by DPI.
Or the community.
Yeah, there's.
You would have two separate school boards.
Yes, you have a separate school board, like we have with the virtual charter. Virtual charter cannot run a building-level charter, they're two totally separate entities. That's why school districts, you'll see some school districts on the list that have multiple charter schools, because they, they have virtual and charters. The Renaissance Academy at River Falls is an alternative programming school that they have for some of their children with very high needs. They do have the Montessori program that is a charter. The funding source, long-term, is no different than regular school funding. There is not additional money that comes with charter schools. So if the challenge is related to funding, a charter school doesn't help us with that. The only thing that you can spend the additional planning grant money on is new expenses that you would have related to planning. So you couldn't even use the planning grant money to, as a stopgap related to the charter school planning. It has to be on new expenses, new people, new curriculum, new everything. As Bonnie said, and I think you even alluded to, there has to be some type of niche that, there has to be a reason you have a charter school. To keep an elementary open is not one of them. And to perform, just to say we want to just perform at a high level is another reason not to, that, that wouldn't meet the test that DPI has. The reason our virtual charter is approved is because virtual education is very different than brick-and-mortar education, so that is the niche that, that, that goes there. So although it's, it's not that it's not something that we can't look into, it, doing a, doing a charter school up there will not reduce our budget challenges that we have. And I think people have to understand, there is no ability in Wisconsin charters and Minnesota charters to take children from out of state. You have to be a resident of the state. And so, one of the things that happens when you see some of these very popular things that happen on the other side of the river, is there are hundreds of thousands of students in about a 45-minute drive in the metro, where that's not the case for us. We are the big, we are the big district over here, so there, there are definitely some challenges with it. Like Bonnie said, it takes a long time, because before the board can even consider it, all of the other legwork has to be, has to be done before that's done. So I, I did do some checking on this morning when you, you had asked me, emailed earlier. It's, it's, there's just, there's no additional funding associated with it. So whether you keep the building open or you turn it into a charter, financially, it's the same outcome. I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't change the scenario, so. Brian?
I had a question on how charter schools are funded, so Nick, thank you for answering that. I, Erin, I applaud the, an idea and creative thinking, and, you know, I have very deep roots, as I've talked many times, at that school, so I'm, I'm looking for an out here. But it kind of, my, my, my take is, I, I think that this district does need to start thinking outside the box a little bit, but I don't think we- a little bit but I don't think we can do that while we're trying to scratch and claw to balance the budget I think that should be something we can start talking about now as preparing for growth sometime in the future but a charter school feels like something we'd have to do when we are growing and you know we need another school or I mean God willing sometime we'll be in that situation that you know this this conversation stinks I'd much rather have that conversation but it I you know it's back to the numbers it's like how do we make it add up
well and I think Mr. President
Gordon
like I have been looking for an out you know like there's gotta be some way you know like and they're just I don't see a way to keep these schools open that doesn't lead to cuts in so many other areas that it's sort of the death by a thousand cuts we have unpaid furlough days for staff we've reduced you know career and technical offerings we're getting rid of AP courses we're increasing class sizes you know if it goes above 32 too bad your class is gonna be big we can't afford 100,000 for a teacher like it it would just be that sort of death spiral you're speaking about and I think we are at a critical inflection point where you need a the hard decision needs to be made because the numbers are right there there is no way out but to the feeling side of it because I have a lot of feelings about it that are not happy I'm very sad and it stinks like how do we how do we where does the bell from Holton go if it closes like like both my kids have ringed that bell you ring that bell your kids ring that bell like I don't want that bell gone where do we put it where does that tradition continue which grade school would take on the fine arts night that Willow does you know like I think part of it is these traditions and this nostalgia and these like magical moments that you have with your kids in your community and those don't have to go away like there are other ways there are ways we can continue traditions and continue to build community and there will be a loss of something but we can also gain other things so like I'm not a Pollyanna outlook person most people would who know me well but we can make this as beautiful as possible if we decide we want to do that it is hard but we can move those traditions forward
Maria
thanks Mr. President a couple of thoughts one just riffing on the traditions you know there are some amazing traditions at every school when when we started out at Rivercrest I thought you know the carnival that we held as a fundraiser was the thing that I thought Rivercrest started it I found out nope guess what Holton started that there are unique things like Hudson Prairie does a science fair that is not something that all schools do EP Rock has connections that go to the community home the nursing home nearby where they are having intergenerational connections these things happen and they're unique things that the building level staff want to build community and they build these traditions with intentionality with the parents and with the students and the communities that surround them so I 100% agree new things will emerge and they will be amazing thinking about the charter just to get back to Aaron's original I too appreciate the creativity I think you know we've we've explored the foundation piece and what would a charter look like and where my mind keeps bumping in is our two pieces there are still building maintenance needs that are happening Holton as a building is not ADA compliant that is unacceptable and cannot continue so that means for example if you have a special needs kid to be able to bring them to the bathroom and have the proper supports to bath that will get them there we are not meeting that need and we like that is not an easy upgrade there's what $6 million estimated by the facilities and that number is probably grown to entertain that a charter we would have to say we are also then going to address and or exceed the building needs in Holton and I'm that in my mind requires a referendum to the community and I'm not quite sure they would have that appetite when I think about it kind of then dovetails to me in an enrollment population Nick I sent you a slide earlier today and I'm sorry to put you on the spot I don't know if you could bring it up I looked at applied population and a lot of people have come in at that one and questioning that that study that was done shared with us in 2022 and so what I did is I looked at the four projection models out there the most generous one was the kindergarten trend the most conservative one I think was the three year model trend and said what do we see what were they predicting starting with the 2022 school year through today so 2022 to 23 23 to 24 24 to 25 25 to 26 four years of data so we now have the benefit of looking at what actually happened with those enrollment numbers and I it's not showing but even their most conservative model we dramatically underperformed in enrollment in our actual numbers and it is so stark when you look at it I don't to echo Brian's statement we're not in a moment of growth even though as as a pop as a community as a county we are experiencing unprecedented growth that growth is coming from the 55 plus age range they are coming here to build their retirement homes they are coming here as this is their from Minnesota from wherever to build that we are declining year over year in our age group of zero to four years old the future of elementary enrollment I mean the blue line at the bottom is our actuals so the cluster at the top the yellow the orange the gray and the light blue those are all applied projection models and I pulled them just for transparency from page 21 22 23 and 24 of the applied populations report I used the total enrollment for K through 5 only and compared that to our actual enrollment from our enrollment table of K through 5 only so this is just elementary comparing their projections most even their most conservative model again we continue to underperform it it is undeniable the population shift what is happening and even with the housing growth that we might see it's not the housing growth that we need and it's not even to the level that we need in our county we need over 4,000 housing units in the next 10 years where there's a creative homes entity that's subdivision that's just popping up off of Stagecoach as you come into the city of Hudson they start at $400,000 and I think there's about 10 units going in there I just went up to St. Joe yesterday on a walk with a with a friend and there's 10 there's the what is it the divine one off of E where they have 11 lots only one remains and they're in building but they're selling for $200,000 a lot and the minimum house buy is $600,000 these are $800,000 at a minimum house they're not and when I when I say a young family I mean a family with young kids I'm not talking about the age of the parents although if we want to talk about that I'm bouncing around I'm sorry it is the older the longer we wait to start families we're not we're significantly less likely to say we're gonna have two three four kids it just doesn't work that way and that is in part why we see the population decline it just these are all the things that are baking into it it's not it it's just it's the realities it feels yucky and these are not levers the board can pull things to address we need the county board and I've said this before the county all of the city the township boards we need the community we need the developers coming together to say how are we addressing the housing which is real for our businesses they they cannot find people they are bringing people in this we are all feeling it and if we really want to grow and we want strong schools and we want strong communities housing is our thing and we need action
I think is there any other topic
I don't I just had budget staff family communities and programming I don't I don't know if anybody has any Molly
I have something thanks and my my microphone didn't try and kill me I've had a number of emails from parents especially at Willow who are concerned about special ed so I know that the model has changed over the years that basically you don't have to do the follow up programs you provide services in a child's homeschool so if their child's homeschool is North Hudson they go to North Hudson and they receive those services there I know when Erin and I went through Rivercrest I was really impressed because they move their special ed classrooms to where they need to be every year so if a kid in third grade needs X services they move them closest to that wing of the school it seemed like so there's a lot of concerns number one I think we've all got an email or about mixing EBD and ASD together people are concerned about that people love their teachers their autism spectrum teachers are neuroatypical they're concerned about transitions and how that would go and I I really feel like I mean this is special to me because my kids were in the EBD program and North Hudson and transitions are really really hard for kids with even ADHD really hard and autism just so what's the plan how are we gonna do that and are what kind of how will the services change are we offering all the services that are necessary in every school and how does that look just kind of to go over that a little bit more
I can speak to some of that in terms of services services would not change so we can't change students' IEP services outside of having an IEP team meeting whatever each individual child has in their IEP whatever school that they're at we provide those supports and services so we can have students on a continuum of services anything from a small amount of push-in services do they receive their special education services 100% of their day in a special ed classroom and don't have access to peers it's dictated by each individual IEP so as an administrator depending on where students are whether they're at North Hudson whether they're at Willow Rivercrest whatever building they may be we staff those buildings accordingly to what those IEP services are so we look at the whole continuum anything from equipment to the number of teachers to the number of parents
can I ask a follow-up question sorry kind of related to transitions I mean we talked about Maria talked about earlier you know how you know there were family nights and Nick you you know if if the school closes we're gonna we're gonna do events would there be extra time or work done with students who have autism or other needs so that the transition we can smooth the transition as much as possible if they're changing schools
yep so we do that already with when students are moving from elementary to or even 4K to elementary and then elementary to middle middle to high and then we even have students that after high school go into our transition program 18 to 21 so a lot of our students have a lot of different transitions and we have a lot of different things to support them in those transitions whether it's bringing our staff together sometimes we do adjust those IEPs and have IEP meetings to determine will services look different so we would do something very similar that we're already doing when they are moving from an elementary to a middle school if they were moving from elementary to elementary and we do have kids that move within different attendance boundaries and have to move schools throughout the year because their family home moves and we would operate supporting them the same type of way yeah
Brian I've gotten I've heard a lot of the same emails sorry read I'm losing my words today and I you know I think one thing we should do as a board is really kind of keep the special ed transition on the front burner as we we go through this process not that you won't do an excellent job and the rest of the staff but kind of really you know it's been really heartwarming hearing about what works and how comfortable these these families are and you know some of the some just some of the stories about things turning around at home because of things happening at school is really amazing and I'm sure you hear those stories all the time at our other schools too but I just think we should as a board prioritize that transition it's a really important piece that we need to make that as smooth as possible
and I know there has been some perception some back and forth out there about our special ed programming you know changing from sender base as if it's happening right now and I've talked to Tara about this at length and this is something that has been going on for quite a while and we should you know in my mind we should expect all of our schools have the same quality and I know that some certifications are different and whatever but they're they're not required necessarily we should expect all of our best teachers to model and and help all of our teachers get to get to the same level and at all of our schools that's what's fair that's I just wanted to comment on that because I know it's been out there that is a big change it's not a change so Erin
when we talk about Holton and Willow when I toured them that was something was talking about special education with Molly and and the staff that was there and while they do have a nice program I do have to say the other four schools are incredibly well equipped to deal with the special ed kids at a much higher level just all in general and some of that referendum money did go very specifically and very thoughtfully to that set of kids to really utilize and benefit those spaces just some of the upgrades that you will not find at those other schools that were at the the schools that we toured which would be Prairie and particularly North Hudson and even EP Rock I believe all have some special lighting that's been put in there which helps a multitude of students and the color changing and all that kind of stuff and just the spaces in general and they are all up to code those the other two schools Maria did say that I have to unfortunately I have to agree the Willow and Holton are not up to code for special ed and it is a big problem from somebody who just built unfortunately rules and regulations change when you are building a commercial building it's not the same you don't have the same requirements all of a sudden your fire code comes into play all of a sudden oh you don't have you need to have another bathroom you need to have you know certain certain features in those bathrooms you need to have a shower all of a sudden all things that you're looking at as a business going like I don't need any of those things no 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 we just want this it doesn't matter there's codes that have to be made when you do upgrades and that is kind of where we are at with those schools that was hard to to see that like I mean and they're not in bad shape don't get me wrong but they are not up to code and that is a big problem and we have these other things I mean we hear all the time how we want the special ed kids to really have a great school experience and I think we've really done a good job to achieve that in the best way with these new upgrades
Mr. President
yes
I just want to follow up and just support with your saying as well you know I think the teachers are amazing at Willow I noticed when we went to Hudson Prairie or I don't remember what school it was it does not matter there was a kiddo who was using a wheelchair to get around and all I could think was how impossible is that at Willow and a kid who's in special ed deserves to be with their class and then I had thoughts of what if there's a fire in this building how are they all getting out and not to open up that can of worms but it just I don't know just having walked that road those parents are walking alone so much of the time and it's really really important that they are at the top of the list and that we do everything possible to make sure that every kiddo has every opportunity to participate
I'm sorry
I was just gonna say it feels like
thank you
for me what I hear is a really important North Star for us as we move into that
things are happening
I was recording
I was just gonna say as we
thank you Shannon
it feels like a really big North Star for me that you identified there making sure there is a strong plan for special education families and that we talk about it and circle back as a board to say what does this look like and checking in and making sure I I feel like that's just like I would commit to that too that was an important milestone
okay have we come to a point where we should be wrapping this meeting up I believe
are there other topics or people
Are there other topics, or people?
Do you think we talked, do you think we talked about the teacher aspect? Is there anything you think we should cover with that?
I mean, I want to give everyone a voice, but rounding that clock.
Can Nick maybe speak to that? I mean, the teacher aspect, because you did go in and speak with some teachers. Could you maybe talk on that for a minute? Or Shannon, who was with the teachers before, particularly at Holton, and, and just like, you know, any feedback, just so we have people that have actually talked with teachers? I mean, Molly and I talked to teachers, but we didn't talk to any teachers that said anything pertaining to closing.
I think the conversations that we've had recently have been really around what, what will happen if one or more building closes. So we're just, we've talked really about what that process will look like, and that there will be input, you know, from teachers, and it will be a very robust conversation, and staffing will be, like Andrea puts it, on steroids, that it will be very robust with lots of input from teachers.
Megan?
Can I ask what the process will be for non-certified staff? Because we, we have the policy for certified staff, but there were quite a few certified staff from Holton, or non-certified staff from Holton and Willow at the meeting, and I know they're worried about their jobs, and, you know, every reduction on that page is a real person. Some, there might be attrition, attrition in retirement, but people are scared, so.
Absolutely. So we do have reduction in force language in both of our handbooks, both our certified staff handbooks and our support staff handbooks. But one of the things that would be happening, and it's going to actually be underway here in the next few weeks, is there'll be a group of folks, committee of folks in the district kind of talk through what that looks like and that process looks like. The, the robust process that has to do with, you know, staffing and determining how staffing goes is making sure that at first, we're looking at, how can we deal with some of these positions through attrition, first and foremost? We do a lot of hiring in the district. You know, we talked about our certified staff, those would be teaching staff. We average anywhere between 30 and 50 teaching staff hires every single year, not necessarily all at the elementary level, but we do, we do hire a lot of folks. We hire even more folks as it relates to our, our support staff as, as you look at it. So I know Andrea will be working with Bonnie and, and building principals to address those, those processes, so that staff knows exactly how that's going to unfold. You know, that's a lot of the questions that people had when we went and talked to the buildings. You know, I know there was, as we talked about misinformation out there, that we were telling people, everything's been decided, and this is what we're doing, and all of these things. But it was an opportunity to try to alleviate some of the questions and concerns that people had, if something was to happen in a certain way. And so what was told to them is, yes, there, that, you know, our facilities and grounds and, and food service, and all of the different folks on the operational side and support staff side, and the building principals being involved in putting together a very robust process related to that.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm trying to think of how this is going to sound without sounding awful. You give it a try. It's me, so. If we're, if we're talking about, you know, teacher input and what they feel about closing of a building, you know, I do believe that, this has been going on for years now, and teachers are wanting some finality so they can plan their, their careers as well, no matter what that outcome is. But, you know, I mean, are we, are we also asking them, are they willing to, you know, how do they feel about, you know, a change in benefit plan? Or, you know, I mean, I, I don't think anybody believes that we're going to get to the point where we would actually have to, you know, raise class sizes, cut teachers as a result of, of our discussions, when it's absolutely a potential. So, and I can't believe there's any teachers that would say, yeah, I'd rather have my benefits cut and freeze my salary so we can keep spending money when we're at 63% capacity. So, and that's, that sounds awful, doesn't it? But I mean, if we're, you know, I, this is, this is where we are. So, and I know that there's people in the community, too, that might think, well, they would never, you know, what they would never, and I've already said how I've watched teachers leave this district for better pay across the river, so don't want that to happen, so. Brian?
This is sort of tangential to the, to the teacher topic, but.
It's a big word for me.
One, one issue that I thought, that I wish I would have mentioned earlier to kind of get on the, the agenda that I think is worth talking about, we've all heard a little bit from teachers specifically on this, and, and that is timeline of the closure. We, we, in July and August, when we talked about this, Nick and the, the other cabinet members kind of talked through a, a basic plan of how this would work if we wanted to get it done by, if we wanted to close schools for the 26th school year. And I, I think you gave me confidence, at least, that we, we'd be able to run a process that includes rebounding, restaffing, working through special ed, all these components, and we can do it in a way that families can participate and be comfortable. So I've landed in a place where I think we can do that, and I think it makes sense. I think it, my feeling is that it would be really hard to make a decision to close schools, but then wait another year. Already at Holton, we have, we're, we're having a hard time replacing some of the administrative staff positions that, from retire, retire, retirements last year, and it, it, I think it would be even harder to run a school, but I just thought it would be good to hear from, from the rest of the board on, on timeline.
Maria?
I echo a lot of what you were saying about timeline. When we started this discussion back in May, it was, it was top of mind, like, give us, give us the roadmap of, by when do you need, and then what does that look like, so you can not just effectively, but do it well and give staff and families the time? I remember, you know, when, when we had our transition, it was helpful knowing at the end of the school year, going into the next, what, what was coming down and not having to wait on that. That was super helpful. It gave our family time to talk with, with the boys, and I know that was true for others. And so wanting to give that time and space, as well as for the new building administrator, the, the new building folks to really build their teams. I mean, I think one of the things, I, I have two sisters who are in education, and so I hear this often from them, the work that happens within the buildings is amazing, and it takes strong building administrators to build a team, to get forward movement of all, like, the fact that we have the middle school increasing in math scores, and we have reading achievements, I think it was at EP Rock, if I'm, it's late and my mind is getting a little mushy. It's because we have these building administrators that are building teams to do this, and so we want to, we want this successful for them, because that translates into success for students and families. Something you said, Brian, it's something that's been bopping around in my head right now, we're splitting a principal between two schools half-time. That doesn't sit well with me at all. I, I, I'm not in favor of it. The role of a principal in a building is critical, and, and the things that bubble up from being able to just support not just the morning transition of students coming in, but the things that bubble up throughout the day and support staffs, you know, walking into classrooms, having planning meetings, and then you're dividing your time between, then there's so many things that are unseen and unnoticed that need to be so that a building principal can really grow a building, and I feel like we're doing a disservice to those two buildings right now by splitting a principal, quite frankly, that I, just, that is not a, something I am comfortable with, and, yeah.
I've also heard from Holton families in that regard that, you know, like, the Holton Parent Association got walkie-talkies for the teacher because there's not always, you know, the principal is split between the two places, and then when Ms. Stanek isn't in the front office, who is there? So I think, you know, part of what I've heard from people is if, if you're going to close Holton, and, and they love their new principal, she's doing a great job, but she can't be in two places at once. So how do we help them close well? Is there a way to give better support on the front office end? I, I, I don't know. I think Ms. Stanek is taking on a lot of responsibility, and people are, the teachers have the walkie-talkies to see if someone's there. Again, my brain is mush, but I think that there are, what are things we can do to help with the transition? Because it's a lot to be principal of two buildings, which Mrs. Sexy probably remembers from, from that job.
Mr. President?
Erin?
I feel like we're getting, I mean, I know the community wants to hear, like, what comes next, but I feel like we've had a lot of conversation tonight, and you just went in an area that we should really be having an entire board discussion around on, on the steps that come next. And actually, as you were saying, that I was kind of writing this off as kind of my closing statement, and I don't know if that's where the board's at, but I just, I feel this is pretty relevant because this is just what I'm hearing after sitting through this discussion. I think it was well put out, and I've heard a lot of perspectives. And just remind people, like Kate had said, as a new board member, one of the most difficult things, and the whole board here knows it, because they get emails from you, and they're like, Erin, you can't send us all an email. Like, I can't do that, and it's so darn frustrating. This is really the only time we get to talk, and I can tell you, somebody who's all about transparency, I mean, ask me, ask me how many times I've gotten like, Erin, we can't do that, Erin, you know? I'm trying, but it's really hard, you guys, so I'm sorry. But I feel like we, like, we need our board and our community right now to just stand strong and really just brace for whatever comes next. And we don't, I don't know how anyone up here is going to vote. I don't. I could guess, I think I might still be wrong, and, and we just don't know. But it does sound like my perspective from listening to everybody, based off of the history that my family and Maria's family had with the boundary line changes and our experiences that went with that, what I'm hearing from this board, and I think where Megan was kind of trying to go, was that we are ready to support our students in their education, our staff, and our community through this process for the very best outcome. And I'm, I feel pretty certain that everybody here feels that. And, and in that, yes, we, we should talk next time after we make a decision about how we can go about doing that, incorporating the best of the best from both, right? Or one, or however that looks like, and getting really creative, that's what I like to talk about, and bringing in the community and, and, and more feedback, and break down groups on how we can do that, and really involve the community in that process. So I would kind of like to just, if we can even put that as an agenda item for the preceding meeting of what that looks like, I think that would help that hold the line kind of thing. Like, let's just, like, work through this a little bit, and unfortunately, we do have to take it kind of one step at a time, because we don't know birth rates. I mean, we really don't. We can guess, we have numbers and projections and lines across papers, but we really don't know, and we really are just doing our best to come up with something that fits the district.
Very good. Does anybody else have any finishing statements or whatever? I feel like I've pretty much said what I would like to say tonight.
I'm done, thank you. Just one, kind of, we are one community at the end of the day. I think Molly said it beautifully, we're, we're still neighbors today and tomorrow, and everybody here wants what's best for our entire community and for all the kids and all the families, and I, I see that as another North Star that's guiding this conversation for this board and for me, and I appreciate that, and I just appreciate the time of everybody just walking through and sharing their thoughts. It was really helpful for me because I, I, I don't have, I didn't have a sense walking in what was resonating for folks, so.
Well, thank you, thank you, Maria, for herding cats tonight with your process. We tried to stay with that as much as we could, but I would accept a, a motion to adjourn. And I'd like to thank everybody who showed up and.
Thank you, everybody.
Especially that made it all the way through, and remind people that, yep, it is, will be, even though YouTube was goofed up, it will be on, on YouTube, so.
Did you? I, I would motion to adjourn, Bob.
Motion by Erin?
Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, we are adjourned.